Are we going to be good? Everybody set? Are you good?
I'll let you know in a sec. Yeah, go for it.
All right. I'd like to bring the Redevelopment Agency budget hearing to order. So first, we need to speak about some potential... I don't think we have any amendments at this time. Dean, do you want to speak to that? And if you could speak into the podium, Mike, that works better.
Yes, this hearing is for the Redevelopment Agency. And there are two items we need to look at. The first one is amendments to the Redevelopment Agency budget. We don't anticipate any amendments for this year. So tonight will be hearings and then action will be taken two weeks from now. So we hear the items tonight and then we'll take action in two weeks from now.
Okay.
And then the second item is consideration of the Caseville Redevelopment Agency budget for fiscal year 2019. And that should be in your budget booklet behind Tab 8. And I'm going from memory here, but I think the revenue there is $135,000. And that's tax increment revenue coming in to the Flint Street RDA. And the expenditures are $25,000 for professional services and $110,000 for repayment through the general fund for previous loans.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'd like to now open up the public hearing on this. You have three minutes. And if you would like to speak, come on up. All right. So I take it that we don't have anybody who would like to speak to the Redevelopment Agency budget at this time. So I will close that for now. And we will... I think I... Do I need a motion to close this, Shane, and start the next?
I think that would be best, yes.
All right. I will entertain a motion.
A motion that we close the hearing budget, budget hearing.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Barber and seconded by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Okay. And we have caught up. We are now at the Municipal Building Authority budget hearing. So we are looking at the Caseville City Municipal Building Authority. Do you want to say anything to this, Dean?
I can, if you'd like.
Yeah, please. That would be helpful.
Again, for this hearing, there are two items. First item includes amendments to the Caseville City MBA Authority budget fiscal year 2018. And in this instance, we do have an amendment that we'd like to present for hearing and then take action two weeks from now. We suggest an amendment, and I think we've given you some paperwork there in front of you. We find it necessary to amend the expenditure debt service payment from $400,000 to $412,000. If you recall, we did a refinancing on the MBA about a year and a half ago, and we moved our debt service payment from $430,000 to $390,000. But during the interim, there was some accrued interest that we needed to post from the old interest rate as opposed to the new interest rate. And so that additional $12,000 accounts for that accrued interest.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. All right. I'd now like to open the pub... Sorry.
Then there's another item. The next item...
Oh, please. Yep.
The next item is fiscal year 2019 budget. And that is the debt service payment on the police station through the building authority. And that's a $390,000 payment for fiscal year 2019. So the revenue source is general fund revenue coming in to the MBA and then the debt service payment.
All right. Okay. So now we will open the public hearing, and we will hear public comment on either of these items. And so anybody who would like to speak to this may do so. Okay. I don't see anybody who would like to speak to this at this point. So I will close the public hearing on the Municipal Building Authority budget. And I would entertain a motion to close this budget hearing.
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Page.
Second.
And seconded by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We're going to wait two minutes before we start the budget hearing for 2019. We have to not start early. Okay. I'd now like to open the Caseville City Council budget hearing, speaking to enterprise funds, interfund services, and transfers. So we did send out a letter to the public about this, and also there was a video. So any... Everybody clear on that? And we would like to open up the hearing on this, if anybody would like to speak to this.
Is this open to speak or is somebody going to sound?
Actually, I... If you would like, I can explain. So for this, what we're talking about is the money that is... In the letter that was sent out, we talked about the value that the city gets from our enterprise funds. That's one section of it. The second section is talking about the money that the enterprise funds pay to, into the general fund. And those are for services rendered. So those are for administrative IT and fleet services. So it is more economical and efficient for the city to provide those services for the enterprise funds and bill them for those services than for each individual enterprise fund to hire people to take care of those tasks. So the letter that you received was indicating how much money is exchanged in... between the enterprise funds and the city organization for those services. All right? So would anybody like to speak to this? And you will have three minutes.
Mayor and council, my name is Lynn Galbraith. Appreciate this opportunity to address the city council on this particular item. I have some concerns, and I'd like to share them with the council. My first concern is you've gone across the board and taken money from every one of the enterprise funds. The problem that I see is that this is not permissible with the power fund based on Proposition 5, which limits what you can do with that money. I have consulted with... Well, I've talked to both the mayor and Dean and also members of the committee that I worked with and some council members. For the committee, we're unanimous in the position that this violates Proposition 5 to take this money. The problem is, is when you take it out of the fund and you put it into the general fund, that is in opposition to what the law states. And I realize from reading what you've got here, that it's supposed to pay for all these bills and so forth. But that's a before-the-fact item. The proper way to do it is to bill the power fund for the services rendered. I'm interested to know why it hasn't been done before. It's the first time I've seen this happen. Last year, it was not included in the statement to... This is the card that was sent out. The power fund is not included in this. So I'm wondering why it's being done now. I have another problem with the whole business of taking utility enterprise funds and using them for city business. It seems to me that the city should budget for the things you've mentioned in this letter. It should be part of the budget, shouldn't be coming out of enterprise fund monies. If we have excess money, shouldn't they be going back to the citizens in the form of rate reductions rather than the city using those like it's a taxing entity? You know, we seem to have gone full circle in this. Back when we had petition drive to put Proposition 5 on the ballot, it was because the city was using these funds. And I might add, they were using them illegally. Now we're back to using these funds again. Now, I realize that some of these things are legal. I don't think that they're right, but I don't think that it's illegal. However, taking them from the power fund is specifically illegal because we passed Proposition 5.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Galbraith. Anyone else? Thank you.
I wanted to address that Proposition 5. Proposition 5 was passed. It was passed with over two-thirds of the voting district. And it was law. And we had a lot of dissertation about the power funds, how it could be used. It boils down to this. It is the law that you can only use electric funds for the delivery of electricity to the people, the customers. Nothing else. And it should never be changed. If you've got an excess, then you give the rate pavers the benefit of that excess and decrease it. And I think that if you try to delve into this, we're going to end up with another... I've got here the auditor's report that we were written up... Caseville has been written up twice for doing this by the auditor. And you just leave those funds alone. And I think that unless you can justify it and show me in the law that you can legally do it, I want you to leave those funds alone. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brig Lewis. And I also have some concern about how the funds are taken because of Prop 5 into the general fund. And I understand that that was incorrect when we tried it before. But after Prop 5 passed, there were all kinds of explanations about why it was okay. Well, Barnifield did it, somebody else did it, this happened. Turns out that wasn't true. Even though somebody else might be didn't, that didn't make Proposition 5 correct, at least the way that we were. I would recommend that what the city should do so that it does fall within five is they should literally bill, not ahead of time, anticipating that our expenses are going to be this. Maybe you can do it four times a year or whatever. But you should build a power fund for services that are provided and then let them write the check back to the city. And how you deposit it is something else because they're paying for services that were provided. Right now, these transfer funds are not paying for services provided. They're paying for anticipated services. We don't know what they are, not yet anyway. So I think that we need to... I recommend to take a step back, look it over carefully, and make sure. Because we will check with our legal people, too, to make sure that what is happening is the right way and obey the law. Anyway, I think we need to take another look. And we need to be above board, transparent, and we need to have a clean audit trail. Not one that we think is going to happen, but one that does happen. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anybody else like to speak to this item? Okay. All right. Then I would like to close the... Oops. Close the hearing on this item. I will entertain a motion to close the budget hearing.
So moved.
I'll second again.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Garn and seconded by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right. Now we are moving on to Caseville City Council budget hearing for 2019. The tentative budget's been up online, and we do not anticipate any amendments to the 2018 budget. And so if anybody would like to speak to the 2019 tentative budget, now would be that time to speak to that for the public. All right. I do not see anybody who would like to speak to this at this time. So I will close the public hearing. And anybody who would like to motion to close this hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close the budget hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilmember Barber, seconded by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. And then I believe we have a little bit of time before... Oh, goodness. We have a little bit of time before our next public hearing, which will start at quarter two. I'll stop the recording. Yes, thanks. The video will still be going and still be recording, okay? Thank you. Appreciate that. (Inaudible)
Well, I think it would give... It's all based on accounting estimates. You know, I was looking at break it down and give each other portions, especially with that time that it's now it's going to take more administrative work. But I think that's fine. We'll go back for that, too. It is what it is. Well, that's, I think, actually like what they're suggesting. There's some cost or some headache. It'll, Matt, appropriately, because... But the other thing is...
All right. Now, we are going on to the public hearing for the adjustment of a common municipal boundary with Leyton City to remove approximately .005 acres of property at approximately 166 West Mutton Hollow Road from Caseville City and annex it to Leyton City. Please.
This property is-
No talking, please.
-a two-foot wide strip across the back of the lot, shown here with the yellow line as the portion to be-
Can you wait for a second?
No.
No side conversations. Thank you, Andy.
Property is just off Fairfield and Mutton Hollow Road. Property to the north in Leyton has desires to expand their building that you see there. They needed two more feet to meet the setback requirements in Leyton. So they've acquired that from the property owner. And in order to make that totally official, they need to annex the property into Leyton. So again, it's the width of the property, which is about 145 feet, going from two and a half feet on one end to a half foot on the other end, about 290 feet, as I recall, 216 something. So minimal piece of property. We don't see any impact to the city. That's what the issue at hand is tonight.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And we would like to now open the public hearing to discuss this item. If anybody would like to speak to this, they are welcome to approach the podium. I don't see anybody here specifically to speak to this, so I will close the public hearing. And I will welcome a motion to end this public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Page and seconded by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And we will start again in a few minutes. All right.
Mayor?
Sir.
We'd like to talk about it in one, and then you can make two motions or one motion at both ends.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Thank you. All right. It is, all right. We'd like to call the June 7, 2018 City Council meeting to order. And we will have our opening given to us by Councilmember Dave Adams.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads before the beginning of the City Council meeting. And we are grateful that we live in this land of America, that we have the freedoms that we have, and that we have the blessings that we so abundantly enjoy. We are grateful for this beautiful earth, for this lovely area that we can live in. We ask our blessings to be here at this meeting, that those council people who consider things will do so with the right attitude and in the right way, that they may be inspired and be honest and aboveright and forthright. We ask these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
And then the pledge. Dave, pledge.
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 Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
No, go ahead. It's part of the opening, so go ahead.
Oh, I defer. I insist.
Councilmember Adams, would you give us the pledge? Thank you.
I defer back gracefully.
All right. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First, no side conversations, please. Okay, first, we will have consent items. I'll take, would somebody like to move the consent agenda? Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda? There's only one item. All right. Would somebody like to move that consent agenda, then?
I will move to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Garn and seconded by Councilmember Page. All in favor? Let's start with Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, moving on. Anybody have any declarations, conflicts of interest for this meeting? Okay, I don't see any. Please, no side conversations.
I have friends here.
Good.
So that's acknowledged, friends who are on the agenda. I know the Fervers, I know the Jones, Dr. Kate Brewer, so just make sure we air that out.
Okay, let's move to our action agenda items. Let's go to A, consideration of an ordinance adjusting common boundaries between Caseville City and Leyton City, removing .005 acres of real property from Caseville City to approximately 166 West Mutton Hollow Road. So it's ordinance 18-6-1. Who, is it Andy? Could you please?
Public hearing on this earlier. Property is located off Mutton Hollow, just west of Fairfield Road. As you mentioned, the request is to annex or do a boundary line adjustment between Caseville and Leyton for just a little bit over 200 square feet of property, approximately where the yellow line is, to accommodate building on the lot in Leyton. They needed a little more setback distance. They acquired it from the property owner and need to annex it to make it legal in Leyton City. We see no impact from this. We've held a public hearing here previously and have received no comments.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We would like to now open a public hearing on this item. Do we have those sign up sheets?
My fault.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have anybody signed up to speak to this item, so I will open it up to questions from council. Any questions from council? Okay, I don't see any. All right. I would like to, I would entertain a motion at this time to pass this.
Well, Mayor, I move that we approve the ordinance to adjust the boundary, the boundary adjustment with Leyton City.
Okay.
Second motion.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Page and seconded by Councilmember Adams. Let's start with Councilmember Page.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. Let's go to B, preliminary plat approval for Shadybrook subdivision, Lot 4, amended, consisting of four lots at approximately 600 North Hill Farms Lane. And Andy, thank you.
Property is located kind of on the northwest part of town. That's Angel Street, near the bottom, just off of Angel and the cul-de-sac, the property highlighted there. Request is to subdivide the property into actually four lots. Currently, it's one lot with an existing home there on the west side. Their request is to subdivide it into three additional lots on the back by extending the street out of Hill Farms into a full cul-de-sac and placing the three lots. The lots all comply with the current R120 zoning. The property was, at one point, considered a part of the Hill Farms subdivision and calculated in all those numbers. I've gone back and recalculated the numbers with the new plat, and Hill Farms remains in compliance. That's why we're bringing this back as a preliminary plat, because it's different than what was approved originally. So the plat as proposed does comply with all disowning. And as I mentioned, at least, Hill Farms in compliance as well. Planning Commission has reviewed this preliminary plat and recommended it for approval.
Okay, thank you. All right. We don't have anybody who's signed up to speak to this item, so we will move on to questions from council. Any questions from our council?
Do we have the data for the open space?
Councilmember Adams.
That's a sensitive topic, you know, because there's other parcels down there that were used for open space for Hill Farms. So do we have the data? that were used for open space for Hill Farms, so do we have the data? Could you provide us with that data?
I could, yes. I don't have it with me now.
All right.
Show you the data, yeah.
Just so future, we don't have all these other parcels kind of like this that were used as open space to get Hill Farms approved, saying, well, so just make sure our data and ducks are in a row, that'd be nice to see.
Okay, thank you. All right, I would.
I have a question.
Councilmember Barber?
So this, this wasn't used as green space in the original plat, this was incorporated into the subdivision, and now they're asking for it to be treated separately?
No, they're, technically they're just designing it differently than it was originally plotted into a different configuration. Won't necessarily be part of Hill Farms Homeowners Association, but it's just a different plat than how it was shown originally.
Okay, all right, all right. Councilmember Adams, please allow me to call on you, so.
Yes, madam.
Okay.
It was open space originally, right?
You can see here, this is where the three new lots will go approximately, this little portion here, they showed as open space at one time. Some of those lots will all be larger and that open space will go away, with the extra open space they had, and the increase in lot size average keeps Hill Farms in compliance.
Thank you, all right.
Additional question, madam?
Councilmember Adams?
So if that open space goes away, which open space technically should be able to be used by anyone, is the open space that you're saying that they will still be contributing back to staying in compliance, is that accessible to all residents? Will they have areas of their yards that will be usable by all?
The total amount of open space in the Hill Farms subdivision, as plotted here, exceeds the requirement, so removing this, I can't read the number, 2, 3,000 square feet, they will still have the requisite amount of open space within the development that is required by ordinance.
Okay, great, thank you, Councilmember Adams.
As a follow up, madam, let's stay with it here, so the reason why we had that originally was really not necessary then?
That's correct.
Then why did we have it? Why do we require it?
That's what they proposed.
Interesting, I'll look for that data, thank you for offering to send it.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll move to approve preliminary plat for Shady Brook subdivision lot four.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Garn, seconded by Councilmember Page. Councilmember Garn?
Aye.
Substitute motion?
We've already started voting.
Well, you're moving pretty fast.
So, I think we're just going to vote on this. Go ahead, Councilmember Barber.
We're not going to allow the substitute?
I, we've already started voting.
I think you're fine to stop and recognize the substitute motion.
All right, substitute motion.
It'll simply be just a table until we're able to get the data that's been offered, so we can review it and evaluate it, make sure that going down the road, like I said earlier, that these other parcels don't come and say, hey, we won't do that now too, find that harmless? So, I make a substitute motion that we table the item for two weeks and give us a chance to review that data.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the?
We need to have it seconded at first. Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Councilmember Barber, you had a question?
So, with the rearrangement of these lots and the removal of this, it looks like 6,000 square feet of open space, the zoning doesn't change, the zoning requirement that we had before, so even if we had never had that open space before, it would still be within the ordinance, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, all right, all right, so we started a vote with Councilmember Garn, who is an aye. Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Nay in the context is all.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes four to one, thank you. All right, next we are going to rezone of 1.1 acres of property at 1915 South Shepherd Lane, from heavy agricultural to R120 single-family residential zoning district. Andy?
This property is outlined here on the map, down off Sunset and Shepherd Lane. You can see currently it's owned primarily A5, it was acquired with the property just to the north when Shepherd Lane was realigned, the road used to go through this stretch of property, was acquired and attached to the Brewer property here to the north, kind of a long unusable piece of property as part of their property. They have interest to examine other uses for the property, they feel that would be better used as R120, again, as we see on the zoning map, properties here, the adjacent properties to the east are R120, this is all sewer district property to the south and west. There is a desire, sorry, to potentially pursue putting a home on the property, which would work better under the R120 rules. That will come back as a subdivision plat at a later time, so the item tonight is just the R120 zoning of the designated parcel of property. In there was a public hearing held by the Planning Commission, there was no opposition, spoke at that hearing, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended to approve the rezone.
Okay, thank you. We did not have anybody sign up for the public hearing, so we'll go to council member questions, questions on this item. Yes, Councilmember Hanson?
I live right by theirs, not that that matters, except for, is that a watershed area or anything like that? Just because?
There is a stream that runs through the property. Okay.
So you're saying a river runs through it, is that what you're saying? Yeah, got it, okay, any other questions? Okay, all right, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezone of this 1915 South Shepherd Lane.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Barber and seconded by Councilmember Page. Let's start with Councilmember Barber.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, approval of the Carbon Free Power Project Resolution 18-6-1, Shane?
Mayor and City Council, we have before you a resolution, 18601, that would have Caseville City become part of this project, the Carbon Free Power Project, as discussed at the last work meeting. We've recommended an amount of 1 megawatt at this time, this would make us part of this project for about a year, and we would have future opportunities to either make that 1 megawatt less or more, or completely remove ourselves from the project if we so desire down the road. The Power Commission has recommended that 1 megawatt at this time, and we would, as staff also, recommend that, and we're here to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, and I see Bruce here, that's great. I don't have anybody signed up to speak to this item, so we'll move on to council questions. Do we have any questions at this time? Councilmember Hanson?
If, towards the end of the agreement, I don't think it's a part of the agreement, but it's just a schedule, and in the staff recommendation, it seems like it said $10,000 is what we'd be on the hook for. Is that just a one-year obligation? Because next year, at the end of the schedule, it jumps up considerably, is that correct?
That's correct.
And our, follow up question, can we, are we actually getting the megawatt right now? I thought it's not even.
No.
So what, what do we get for the 10? I, just to be on board for the megawatt when it comes?
Correct, and I think, I think at this time, they're kind of gauging interest, I think that helps them size the project accordingly or appropriately, and I think a lot of that will change, I think ours would change as well, as things get better or potentially worse down the road. But I think a megawatt is kind of our opportunity to stick our toe in the water, so to speak.
And then, are we going to have the same vote next year, the council then, for the 30,000, to go forward with that?
Yeah, Bruce, is that, is that how that would work? Is it like an automatic trigger after a year?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Good question. All right, any other questions at this time? Councilmember Page?
Yeah, probably Bruce could answer.
Okay, Bruce, thank you.
You know, I just don't want Bruce to come here and not be able to start. Bruce, hey, just, just a question, I, I know that the $10,000, you know, if the project doesn't go through, we're, we basically lost that, but after the $10,000, and we'll know a lot more in, in a year from now, what's going on with the thing. You know, according to the contract, it sounds like that money is, if it ends up not going through, or there's a period that we can pull out of that thing, I guess we can get all of it or a portion of that money back, is that how it works?
If the project fails, you know, the, the project management committee, UAMs, everybody decides to get out of it, then it'll be 100% reimbursable, up to $6 million. So, that's why we're doing it in stages, to the point, to see if it's going to progress or not, so. And they're in the process of, you know, sending it through the Nuclear Regulatory Commission right now, Department of Energy is on the hook for 50% of all the cost now, and FLOR and NuScale is the other 25%, so, and it's, yeah, it's fully backed, like I said, if we back out, all of us back out, then it'll be, all the money will be reimbursed.
I noticed too, that if, if certain cities or entities pull out of this contract, I guess it's, it's not only is it recommended, but it's mandatory that other individuals that's in the project, they have to take, take on those shares. Is there a limit on how much you have to take on, or?
Yes, the limit's 25% higher than what you are now, that's the limit.
Okay.
And, and each time that happens, it has to be approved by the project management committee also, so it's, it's a group decision, so, whether they want to take it or not.
All right.
Can I ask one more?
Councilmember Hanson?
Is, are we the only, like, is UAMs the only system that's supporting the project, or are there other?
Where, where they are, we are the lead on it, so, and then they're soliciting other, other interest in it for, to get the full subscription up to the 600 megawatts.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Bruce? Councilmember Barber?
Last question, because I get a lot of questions on this from residents, you just want to know, what, what is this investment going, going to yield us later on, that we're doing? And my explanation is, it's an investment in the future technologies that may come out, that make us more efficient in the future. Would you add anything to that?
Well, a lot of things, I mean, it's, it's carbon free, so there's, there's no emissions to it, it's actually slated to last for 80, 60 to 80 years of the life of it, so we have a long term. And the biggest thing with, with all the renewables and things that are online now, that we have to have a base load, and they, that nuclear, that new nuclear technology follows that load very closely, so it's, it's the only thing, the gas plants and the, and the coal plants can't, cannot, you know, ramp up and down like this nuclear can, so there are lots of advantages to us, so, but we need base load, that's the whole, and you know, coal and gas go in a way, have to have something to have a base load.
That's helpful, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Garn, Paige, so sorry.
So, so what you're saying, that, you know, you look at it right now, well, there's plenty of power out there, and, and we really don't need it right now, but, so what you're saying is, is, I guess there's a certain amount of coal plants, it's already been, you know, pigeonholed, that they're going to be shutting down? Is this federally mandated, or they're just coming to the useful life of the, of the power plant, and, and the federal government or whatever is not allowing them to?
Some, some of each, over the, you know, there are aging plants, but it's, it really instigated years ago with the EPA and the, you know, the mandates on, on emissions, and that's, I know that's lax the last couple of years, you know, with the 111D being put off, you know, as far as EPA for those restrictions, so that's given those plants maybe a couple more years of life, but, but with, with what was started in the, in the shutdown of the, you know, a lot of the coal plants were forced during those years to shut down, that's all in turn affected the coal mining and shut those down too, so anyways, just, and then like California has a, a carbon adder that they have to add on to any coal that they take products, so that's, that's kind of shut the coal down too, so.
Okay, Councilmember Garn?
It seems like a relatively risk-free investment for a lot of potential gain, but who is the entity, who watches the entity that would pay it back if for any reason the project is not completed?
I told you, the Department of Energy is, in fact, they want the first two modules out of this unit, but Department of Energy is covering 50% of it, and then FLOR, so it'd be, it'd be FLOR and NuScale that made the guarantee on the, on the buyback, because if we decide to pull out, they're, they're still going forward with it, there's other, other entities that would, you know, would take it over, so they still have a value there.
Essentially, it's the federal government that would pay it back?
Well, actually, it's, it's FLOR and NuScale, the owners of the, that would do that, because like I said, they'd take that, because we're already in the process of getting the Nuclear Regulatory Licensing now, so they, they'd have that benefit, they'd give all their money back, and then take that on and, and finish the project.
So who regulates them and who, who audits them to make sure that they're keeping the money in trust in case?
I'm, I don't, I don't know, we could find out, but I'm sure that, like I said, the federal government's probably mandated all those things, because they're, they have a, a big piece of the pie, so.
Yeah, I think so, thank you.
Can I just add something? I, in my experience with UAMs, and it's limited, of course, Bruce can set me straight here, but with every project, they always have a, an annual budget, and, and it's audited, and they, they report back in those annual meetings, and I would think this would be no different in this project, we would see what, what we're getting for our money, where the money's being spent each, just even year, is that?
Yes, that's true, yeah, yeah. There's people at UAMs that are watching all the time, like I said, they have lawyers in-house and everything that are watching that stuff all the time, so, and financial guys, so.
Thank you. Any additional questions at this time?
No.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Carbon Free Power Project.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Hanson, seconded by Councilmember Garn. Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
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 All right.
I did have, I wasn't fast enough, I guess I had a, a comment?
I will allow it.
It's okay, oh, thank you. I'll make it brief, I, I just, you know, I, I almost get excited, you know, I really do get excited about something like this, because it is as exciting as renewable, like solar and wind are, you're going to have to have something for the future, as Bruce pointed out. And this is really exciting new technology, and I think the only, the big thing that's kept nuclear from not coming online is probably the economics, but to be a part of this is, is really as smart and, and essentially, there's no perfectly risk-free investment, but this is about as close as a risk-free investment as you could possibly get to.
Okay, thank you. Any other follow-up comments that want to be made? Okay, great, all right, let's go to approval of net meeting agreement, so Shane?
Thanks, Mayor. Similar to the Carbon Free Power Project, we talked about these two potential changes to our net meeting agreements. One is to the grandfathered agreement, and one is to our current existing net meeting agreement. If you remember, they were, one was to alleviate the annual billing for solar customers, we can now do that on a monthly basis, and the other major change was to the current existing net meeting agreement, which was to limit the size of solar, so that the amount produced would be, sorry, what am I saying, the?
The net?
That's right, the net would be less than, than what was produced.
Other than, yes, okay.
And we, we recommend you adopt these, these agreements, you can do this in one motion, if you mention both of them, or we can do, take this in two separate motions, and of course, Bruce is here to answer other questions about this as well.
Okay, thank you. We don't have anybody signed up for a public hearing on this, so we'll go to council member questions, any questions on this? Yes, Councilmember Hanson?
And maybe, Bruce, you can help, what's the worry about dumping too much back into the system, you know?
Well, that was, like we talked about, the Power Commission, they didn't want, they didn't want incentivize people to overbuild their systems, we don't want people, you know, theoretically.
Becoming their own power company?
Yeah, we would like them to offset their own power, but not, yeah, not be a power producer and push power onto our, our system.
Is that consist, consistent with other power companies?
Yeah, everybody, everybody has a different, different program, but yeah. Yeah, everybody, everybody has a different, different program, but yeah, most, most, most of the cities have a lot lower size limit than we do. Most of them are in the seven to, to 10-megawatt range, where we're, we're, not in the megawatt, but KW range, and we're at 15KW, so they have a lot higher thresholds, so. That is, that caused people to start building, having, you know, putting bigger systems in than they needed. So, that's kind of what started this whole, this whole disparity of, you know, paying, you know, being hooked to the system and not paying any money for it to keep the system going, so. So, that's basically what they. I'm going to try to do that for the commercial ones too, that is coming to you next month.
Thanks. Shane?
Bruce, it seemed like in, in several of the meetings I've been in, that even the solar industry would recommend that, I think a lot of times, people that are, are maybe ignorant of, of solar, they, they go, and I want, I want all of my solar to cover my whole bill. I want to have a zero bill. And I think even the solar industry expressed reasons why that wasn't, wasn't wise, and that they, they even recommend that people size their system to 60% or some, something like that.
Yeah, I think they like to stay in the 80, 90% range, you know, because if, if they, if they do overbuild, the, the solar companies know that they're just paying too much money, and it's, and it's not going to be cost-effective for them, you know? So, they try, they try to size them correctly.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other questions?
Final question.
Councilmember Barber.
And Bruce is going to know that I've asked this lots of times, but it's because I keep getting questions. The, the billing changing from annually to monthly raises a lot of questions, because people wonder, does that change what I'm going to, this investment that I made, how much I'm going to get back? So, as far as I've understood, and you've been really great to clarify, is, it's just the accounting of it. You'll be paid, you'll get your check every month, rather than having to wait till the end of the year to get your check.
Exactly. They'll, they'll get that credit each month.
Each month.
Each month. And the biggest thing, the benefit for them, is that it is, they're going to get the, the retail rate, right, each month? If they waited till the end of the year, like we're doing it now, they don't, they only get our wholesale rate. So, they're actually, it's a benefit for them. And it's a benefit for us, like I told you last time, that, you know, that the accounting and the hand-doing the bills, the 200 bills, that we're, it's a win-win, I, is the way I see it.
So, does the, I'll ask you. Does the overages, is that per month, or is it over my entire year?
Each month, they're going to, they're going to settle each month, so.
So, like in January, where I'm not generating a lot of power from the solar, my net gain is going to be a lot lower than in the summer?
Right.
In the summer months. So, that's what residents are asking me a lot about.
Right. So, especially in the springtime, when we have a lot of sun, and they're not using air conditioners, they're going to have a lot of extra loads. So, those months, they're going to get a lot higher, you know, credit or payback, you know?
And they'll just have to balance it out themselves.
Yeah, they'll balance it out themselves. Instead of us being their bank, they'll balance it out themselves. But like I say, it's, they're getting the retail rate, so it's a, it's a win. And we will, if it, if it does pass, we will, as per the policy, we'll, we will send out letters to them, give them 30 days' notice that, what the changes are, are going to be, so.
Are you finished?
I had one other question.
Okay, one more.
Oh, so that, but that didn't change? It was always per month versus the entire year, that I was?
The way it is now, the way it's set up now?
Where, how it was before, to the new change.
How it was before? Right. The way it was before was, it was, it was giving them a credit each month, right? It wasn't campaigning for it. And then it was letting that go up and down, and up and down, whatever it did during the whole year. And then at the end of that year, you look at it, see if it, it was a total, were they over, you know, for the whole year? So, and that's why, that's why the billing was having to hand-do those bills, because.
It'd be a nightmare.
Yeah.
From a resident's perspective, I think they can rest assured that their net and gain, if anything, it'll be a little bit higher, slightly, slightly higher. A lot of people heard this item come up, well, at least to talk to me, and feared that they wouldn't get their credits, that they were counting on the, the fluctuation of the year to balance out. They still will. That will all be the same. So, thank you.
Basically, they're getting, they're going to get more, like you said, that they just have to be the banker, keep track of that, you know what I mean? They're, they're going to get the credit, they're just not going to have to wait till the end of the year to.
Be fiscally careful with your rebates.
And Councilmember Hanson.
And that is a concern, though, on that. If they get credits and actually get checks cut, and more than they spend, they're going to have to pay back the difference, correct?
That's on the new net metering agreement.
Okay.
That's, that's two different things. The grandfather one stays with, with the original net metering. The new net metering agreement is already, they get paid every month.
Okay.
But on the new one, they get paid a different amount for what, what they use and what they produce. That's the way the new net metering agreement is set up, so it's a different, it's a different payout, payout amount.
So, it's just the new net metering that has to pay back any difference in my?
Yeah, yeah. That's the, that's the change to the new one.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. I would entertain a motion at this time. If you'd like to combine these two items together, that'd be great.
I guess I'm a little confused. I was ready to make a motion to approve the net metering agreement modifications.
I think that, our lawyer says that works. Okay.
And. I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Garn, and seconded by Councilmember Barber. Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes 5-0. All right. Let's go to the human resource manual adoption. And let me just say that I did sit down and read through all this, and this second time around. It looks great. I know this is probably a huge amount of work that you guys have put into this, and I think it looks wonderful. So, just kudos to you for getting it all done.
Well, thanks, Mayor. I think it took, it did take a lo, a long time, and I think it was kind of advantageous just having Nick come on when he did, and was able to be part of that process, which I think was really helpful. We do believe it's ready to be adopted. We moved it from work to action last meeting. I would keep in mind that it's not a final document, it's not a done deal. We would like to review this annually, and there will probably be other instances where we'd like to review it, just when you have something that you'd like to see changed, or added, or different. As laws are passed, sometimes these things affect our, our human resource manual as well, and we want to keep up to date on that. So, we believe it is in a good spot today, and we'd recommend that you approve that. As I mentioned before, I'm very excited about rolling this document out to our, to our staff. I'm excited about having a, a citywide meeting and talking about some of the individual aspects of this, this document, as well as making sure that everybody understands that this is the document by which they need to, to live their, their city life, and, and the, they'll be held to a, a standard here, and they are, already are being held to a standard, but I think this will, will further define that, and it'll be a good opportunity for us to talk about that. So, I'm very excited about that. So, we're here for questions, and of course, we'd recommend that you adopt this manual tonight.
Okay, thank you. We don't have anybody signed up to speak to this in the public hearing, so we will go to councilmember questions. So, any questions on this at this time? Councilmember Hanson.
This is, these policies were already in place, is that correct? And now we're just putting them in formal, publicly available document now?
Yeah. I, I think that's fair to say. We, we've, what we tried to do was mirror what was actually happening on the ground. So, I think things had taken place over time. There've been maybe decisions made from an administrative level, that it's nice to point to actual words, that the doc, the document that the, that the policy body has adopted. Trying to think of a good example of that. There's been several things that have changed in the interim. I think on, the drug policy is a very good example of that. It's very different than when it was adopted in, in, I think, the late 90s, when it was first adopted. Travel, things have changed with, with mileage rates and things like that. So, we've just tried to bring it up to today's standards, and, and mostly mirror what we're doing on the ground. That's correct, if that is helpful.
Thank you.
Councilmember Page.
Yeah, I, I guess, how often are we going to review this? I mean, is this something we do yearly or on a yearly basis?
I think annually is, would we, we'd say at least annually. And I think we'd make a point to do it probably in this, this time next year, if we haven't done it already.
Yeah, I, I actually really like this. One, one thing that it tells me is, well, we're just putting in writings what we're doing. And I think that's extremely important, that we don't have employees, you know, fail, I mean, we don't want them to fail to understand what their responsibilities are and everything else. And I think that, that helps the city very much, and with liability, or if, if there has to be discipline. I mean, you have a document you can go to. I, I think it's, I think it's great that we're moving in this direction.
Councilmember Hanson.
And this will be made publicly available?
Absolutely. You bet. This is a public document. I mean, we, we can put it on our website. I don't know if we even talked about doing that. We certainly can, and would, wouldn't, wouldn't shy away from doing that, but.
I, as a follow-up question, this, so sometimes if, if there's questions about things in the manual, like, can I just bring up an example, just for questions sake? Like, the fire department, we just moved from part-time to full-time, but we added in the, you know, their days off. And the days off for the, the fire department's a lot higher than a normal city employee.
Right.
And I guess, you know, things like me, that pops out to me. So, why? Is that just to be consistent with other municipal fire departments, putting their lives at risk? That we can't, it's part of the compensation package we give them?
That's, that's absolutely the case. We actually were, I think, maybe six months ago, Dean and I were, were asked to meet with our, our new full-time, not our captains, but our engineers. And we talked, we just went through all the different benefits of the city, so they were kind of new at this point. We talked about that, and they, they did raise some concerns. They probably had a list of five, five things that they were just questioning about. And that was one that really stood out to us, where we were really different than other cities. I think also in the fire, in the fire department, they, they work a different shift than, you know, they work the, the two days on, the four days off. So, that lends itself to them having a different vacation. When they take a day off, they're taking 24 hours off. So, giving them just eight hours kind of wasn't really matching up with, with how the fire service operates. So, we did increase that in there. That's, that's right. And that's essentially just an effort for us to be able to keep our people, and, and mirror what's going on in, in the industry. And there are probably other things like that in this document, just not necessarily significant, significant changes, but those kinds of things probably in the past have just happened when, you know, the administration just said, we need to keep our people, let's, let's give them more, more vacation. But I think in this instance, we're just trying to make sure that you're aware of those kinds of things, and that, that you're kind of tacitly giving us permission to, to do, to do that on a case-by-case basis, so.
Any other questions on the human resources manual? Okay. No, I'd entertain a motion at this time.
Oh, I, I move that we adopt the, the human resource manual.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Page, and seconded by Councilmember Garn. Councilmember Page.
Aye.
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 All right. It passes 5-0. All right. We are now going to move into our work items. I do want to mention, if you want to speak in public comment period at the end, you do need to sign up for that. I do have a signup list here. If we can put it back out, just in case folks want to sign up on that. And we'll do that at the conclusion of our work items. All right. First, we're going to have a budget discussion. Turn it over to Shane.
I'll just kick that off, Mayor, if that's okay. We, we are probably at the, one of our last work sessions, if not the last, as far as adoption of the budget. With, there's a couple of outstanding items that we would like a little bit of direction on. The first one is, through this process, we had Chief Erickson come to us, and there were some things that he had, he had neglected to include in his budget. He had included them on a slideshow, and just because we kind of, between myself and Chief Erickson, we just missed putting those things in the budget. So, I think the total is $28,000. It's a thermal imaging camera, and then a uniform allowance. And we believe those things are, are needed and warranted in that, in that department. And we would recommend that we alter, that we alter the tentative budget to include those items. And we can do that without making any substantial changes to the budget. The second item would be the salt storage building. We talked about that a little bit before, and Mr. Belknap was here to, to, to kind of fight for that. We, we've, we think it's important enough that we keep bringing it up, and we, we would recommend that you include that in the budget. It's not in the tentative budget right now. There are two ways that we have outlined that we could pay for that. One would be a capital lease, which would be five years, and it would be a small enough payment that we could put that in the budget very easily. The other way would be just to one-time fund balance and use that just to purchase it. It's $110,000 from the general fund, $40,000 from the stormwater fund, and $70,000 from the water fund. So, that would be a one-time fund balance allocation, and that's how we'd recommend doing it. Just do it, and not have to worry about an, an ongoing lease payment. But those obviously are, are things we're looking to you for direction on. The last item is that we brought up truth and taxation, and going through that process in the budget hearing. And if, if we decide to go through truth and, truth and taxation, we would not be adopting a final budget at the next meeting. We'd be adopting an adjusted tentative budget. That's the budget we would start with on July 1st, and, and start operating with. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't adopt a final budget until we've gone through the truth and taxation process, which would last us until, I think, the second week of August. At that time, we would adopt a, a final budget. So, we're looking for, for direction on that. I think Mayor Witt would like to talk a little bit about that with, with the council. And I, I don't know if it's, we'd love a motion in this, in this meeting to, to address those three items. I don't know if we need a motion, per se, but we, if we get a clear direction, that's what we're looking for, so.
Okay. Thank you, Shane. All right. I think how I want to break this down, I want to talk about the salt shed. I want to talk about the fire department needs, and then truth and taxation. So, let's start with the salt shed. So, anybody have feelings on the salt shed at this point? I think it's necessary. I don't get to vote, but I think that this has been an ongoing need, and I, I would like to see us fund it with fund balance. So, I'll, I'll just go on record as saying that. Councilmember Garn.
So, this was an issue when I was campaigning in 2015, and I think it was an issue long before that. That's just when I became aware of it. So, it's certainly been around for a long time now. It's 2018. And I think the only unfortunate thing is, we found out it's actually, I think even the city, more expensive to build than what we thought it was, but I think in, I thought it might be. But I think in the discussions, you know, at least my question was, well, you know, is it, is it properly bid? Is it going to get less expensive in the future? And the reality is, it's not going to get less expensive in the future, because nothing ever does. It's going to get more expensive, and meanwhile, the need is still there. And there's some question about whether it's even, you know, with groundwater runoff issues, whether it's even a violation of state law not to have the salt covered. Clearly, when it's freezing, we're not exactly Minnesota. It doesn't get 40 below zero, but it becomes very hard to break up the salt and use it appropriately when it has snow and ice all over it, and it, there's time and resources used to try and break it up. So, although it's more expensive than we would like, it's not going to get less expensive, and we really need it.
Other comments? Councilmember Hanson.
Are we? I wish Josh was here too, and sorry, just, how long is this thing going to last? I, I just say it in the sense of, you know, sometimes you, is this the quick fix, or is this the right fix?
I don't know about a timeline, but I don't think this is a quick fix in, in any, any way. In fact, I think we've told, talked about how I was, had some, a major sticker shock when I saw the, the cost of this building. I think it's very, it's not only substantial financially, but I think it is a, a structure that would be a long-term solution for our salt storage. But I, we can find out better. In fact, I'll.
Maybe you could text Josh.
That's what I was going to just.
For some reason, when we discussed this previously, it felt like it was 15 to 20 years. I could be wrong, but it.
He might have said that. I don't, I didn't take good notes.
Yeah, so I think.
That sounds familiar.
Familiar, but maybe we can get verification on that. Councilmember Page, what about you?
Yeah. No, I, I think it's necessary. I, I don't know. After talking to Josh, I think it's going to last longer than that, and only that. I think it's going to be, it's more than just a use for salt as well. In the offseason, you can use it to store things, and different things like that as well. I think certain types of year, you know, I, I think that if you pick up a good deal on salt or whatever, you can, you can have it in place. And you're right. I've seen these guys struggle when you get moisture in there, and it's cold weather, those babies. It doesn't come out of the, the truck. So, I, I actually think it's a necessary thing.
Dean, thank you.
Let me just make a comment on, on the document. It does say, our product comes with a 50-year prorata guarantee on the limited substructure.
Oh, very good.
And depending on your architectural membrane selection, a 15- or 25-year prorata guarantee, all in accordance with the attached guarantee certificate.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. Councilmember Adams, thoughts?
Have we, have we bit it out of three different sources? Have we looked?
Have we looked at different options for the building? Is there a more economical building we can go with? A red iron building set up on a concrete foundation, so loaders can push into? Have we looked at all those options? Are we going to keep the existing asphalt as the base? Or is that coming out? Would we be doing that, too? What's the full scope? Um, I'll stop the questioning there for a moment, entertain some answers.
Um, well, I, I don't know, the, to the extent of, uh, I assume that our Public Works Director has looked at all those things. Uh, we haven't bid anything out yet, because we didn't know if we were going to buy it, so we have a, uh, the, the numbers that have been presented to you have come from a manufacturer, so we think they're pretty solid. Uh, we certainly would do, uh, three bids, uh, assuming we can find three that, that do this kind of building, I'm sure that they're out there. So, um, we would go through that, you know, procurement process like we, like we should. Um, but as for those other details, I don't know, that would, to me, it would be, uh, Mr. Belknap's to, to work out, you know, where it goes, what are the, the different, uh, what's, what's, what's the ground look like? I, it doesn't need to be a certain material for salt, I'm not even aware of that, probably does. No?
So are we saying that this is a sole source vendor?
I, I don't think we know that yet.
Like one company that can cover shed, cover salt?
I don't think, I don't think we, I don't know that yet.
I've seen pole barns do the job fantastically, set up on eight-foot concrete walls, so the loader can push into that stuff.
I think today, we're just looking for permission to go for it and put it in the budget, and then we'll, we'll go through that process. Uh, it's a high enough number, you'll have to agree for the, to the, whatever, the procurement of it.
I'd definitely agree to a number until it's bid out. I'm not throwing a number out in the wind, uh, to bidders at all. So I definitely could not agree to any form of a, of a budget figure. Uh, I could, I could entertain looking at bids and value-engineered ideas on different buildings. The other question that I have is, did you, you said that $40,000 of it will come from the storm drain and $70,000 from the water fund?
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Can you help me understand how enter, those enterprise funds were denied to be used as roads when we were in the road fee discussions, and those ideas were, were thrown out on the table, and it was said, "No, you cannot use those funds for that," which I, I understand restrictions on the funds. Um, but all those utilities live on the roadways, too, and it was denied, it was just, "No, we can't." So how is it that water and storm drain can pay to store salt?
It's, it's because it won't just be salt that's stored there. They'll, they'll, they'll store other things that are used for the water and storm drain funds to, uh, to store there. So that's the breakdown that he did by percentages.
I think we need a pretty good scope and rendering of this building then, to really understand what it is we're building.
Yeah, I think we have that.
I think Maria has something to add here.
Just a side comment, and truly, we can talk to Josh, but I do remember him saying, um, that this is also a requirement, a storm drain requirement with, um, DWQ. Um, anyway, I wondered if that had something to do, and, sorry, not my...
Thank you, thank you. All right. Um, so, good questions. I think probably how we should phrase this is not necessarily, is it okay if we just give general direction that we do want to, uh, uh, fund a salt shed and leave the price tag open and try to get the lowest, uh, most economical, most durable thing? What do you think?
Well, that's what we do for everything. Everything we procure, we do it exactly that way. We have to have a target number for budget purposes, and then we try and get it the lowest price we can.
All right, so just in, guys, no side conversations, thanks. Um, so we're just trying to have, um, a ballpark range, and then we will, so we're not writing a check right now, is what we're saying. Okay, right. Um, Councilmember Garn, please?
Yeah, I would just comment that, uh, you know, a budget is exactly that, your best estimate. So this is a budget number, and we're giving authorization to go out to bid. Hopefully, we beat, we beat the budget number, although at some point, you'd look at it and say, "Okay, are we, are we a little high on our budget estimate? Are we estimating a little too much?" But you, you get as close as you can, based on some professional advice, which is what's been done in this case. Then you take it out to bid, you get the competitive bids, and you take the lowest qualified bid. That's the way the process works. Uh, you can't put the cart before the horse. You first have to decide what our priorities are, that's what a budget is. And now we live within that budget, we have to live within that budget, but if we come in under budget, that's great.
Okay. Thank you. Um, actually, Councilmember Barber hasn't had a chance to speak yet.
Uh, my only, my only question was on the, the payment. Um, if we did the, the gen, the one-time transfer, it would come from the three different sources, but if we did the five-year capital lease, would we proportionately pay each month?
Exactly.
Year, sorry, each year? That same?
That, that same breakdown, percentage-wise.
Okay. Uh, let's see, Councilmember Adams, did you have something?
Yeah. Are we required by law to throw out to the world what our budget is for any project?
Yeah.
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 We're supposed to throw out our engineer's estimate, our budget? Well, okay, speaking in budget, I get that, I understand that. But if I'm bidding a project, and I see the, you know, okay, we're going to spend a million dollars on this, let me tell you, everybody in the contract world gets big eyes. I, I would love that we could get away from these practices. Engineers' estimates going out with our engineered design plans. I'd love to see us get away from that and just let the market bid on the mark.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, so, uh, it feels like general, generally, the council supports going forward with the salt shed, and so, let's...
Are you wording that correctly?
I have not called on you. I have not called on you. If you have a question, please indicate.
Do I have a question?
Yes, Councilmember Adams.
Are you, are you word, your wording that is that we support, like, full-on moving forward, and I want to clear that, I, I would entertain looking at more data.
I understand that that is your position, but from what I have heard from the council members, I hear majority support the concept of moving forward with the salt shed. Do you disagree? That most of these council members?
I won't put words in their mouth.
Okay. Good. You don't have to, because they've already stated what they think. All right. So, let's talk about, um, the fire station needs. So, um, let's start with, uh, Councilmember Barber, what do you think?
Um, the $28,000 for the thermal imaging camera and the wardrobe allowance seems reasonable. I don't see a question to ask.
Okay.
But I did have other fire questions. Things I want to talk about.
Okay, so that...
Besides this $28,000.
All right, let's just stick with this bit right now?
Okay.
If that's okay?
That's fine.
All right, so, because I'm just interested in giving direction to staff on whether or not to include it.
Will, will there, Council?
Councilmember Adams?
Will there be a time where we can speak freely?
Um...
About the budget?
We... Just a minute, okay? We have been having budget hearings, we've been talking about the budget for two months now, and we had a...
That's not a question. You've, you've controlled the, the content and the flow for those two months. Will there be a time when we can speak freely?
Yes.
About the budget?
We are passing...
Councilmember Barber off of some stuff.
Right. And I think she understands that what we're trying to get at is these specific items that were presented by Shane. So we're going to talk about that, and once we get through that, we, we are going to be going through this again, um, at our next council meeting, that, because that's when we actually adopt the tentative...
So yes and no will do. Will there be a time?
Well, it seems like you don't understand, and so I'm trying to be very...
Will there be a time or not be a time tonight to speak freely?
I think I've answered that twice now, that it will be at the next council meeting. All right? Okay, now, still...
I find that to be highly inappropriate, as representatives of the people.
Counselmember Garn, do you have any ideas on, how do you feel about the fire station, the specific things that Shane brought up?
I support adding that to the budget.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Hanson, how about you?
Uh, just where's the, in the balanced budget, where's that going to come from? Because that wasn't proposed already.
Um, it, it's a low enough number that we think we can just make some revenue adjustments and to, to, to balance the budget. We're usually so conservative on those revenue projections. Uh, $28,000 sounds like a lot of money, and it is, but in the, in the scheme of the, the general fund, it's, it's a, a pretty low number, and we think we can just absorb that with...
Do we have a camera right now?
No.
Um, I don't, I don't think so. Dean, do you know anything about that?
We currently have two cameras, but they're, they're not working properly. So this would, this would be three cameras in the request.
Oh, it would be three cameras for that price?
For the $18,000.
Okay. And that 10 would be...
It would be 10 for the uniform allowance.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Page, thoughts on this?
Yeah, just a question, did, uh, did he just forget to put this in, uh, is that what happened? He says all of a sudden, "Oh, jeez, I should have put this in."
I think it was a matter of not writing it on the budget document, but he included in the, in, we had sat down, had a presentation and discussion, it was in the PowerPoint, but it didn't get transcribed to the, to the document that he actually turned in to, to Dean.
I see, so, okay. I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right. Um, so, uh, Councilmember Adams, your thoughts on these two items, the, the thermal imaging and the, um, uniform allowance?
If, if we don't have any thermal imaging cameras now, and we're asking for three right out the gate, I'm a little concerned there. I'm a little concerned, it doesn't seem like we ever pump the brakes on expenses. There's been, it's a lot of money spent in the last six months, and here we are, just, yeah, salt shed, yeah, another 30 grand there, yeah, it's not a big deal. Well, all those 30 grands and those quarter millions, they add up to millions, you know? So, and honestly, I'd like to discuss other things tonight, such as an $800,000 fire truck. Um, but, you know, i- if, if you're going to control the flow...
Which is my job. So, but, it is something that's important. Um, but I, there are these specific things that I need to get answers on, so we'll, so we'll do that. Councilmember Barber?
I was just going to say, I think when most of us see budget discussion, we didn't see those three items. They weren't included specifically in the packet. Just fine to address them, but I think we all came prepared to have a discussion.
And that is great, and I am glad to do that. But I did want to...
It does say budget discussion, she's...
All right. I'm not going to ask you again to please wait to be called on. I, I, I try to treat everybody equally. You are no better than everybody else. Please indicate, I will call on you. You know that I will, because I do it all the time, all right? So please, and also, it is very important that we not have side conversations, because our, our public thinks that maybe you're making special deals or something.
Do you care to comment, Michelle?
I did not call on you once again.
Move the third in half of the conversations that you've had tonight. Would you please stand for it?
That would definitely be...
I'll stand for you, you stand.
Okay.
Okay, you need to look at both of those.
And the rule is that there are no side conversations.
Talk about equal treatment.
All right.
You need to talk to her about, too.
I've already talked to her privately, so...
Oh, so I get the public?
Well, I'm doing my best. So, here's what we're going to do. Shane, do you have the information you need on salt shed and fire station?
I believe so, Mayor.
Okay. Um, so, let's talk about, um, the idea of truth and taxation. Um, so, um, I feel it is important that we do truth and taxation, um, as a transparency, uh, item. I think it's important. Um, I do not feel that it, that we should increase the rate, I think we need to keep the rate the same. I do want to be clear that, um, property values have probably gone up since the last time we did this in 2014, so there will probably be an impact on, um, people's, uh, city portion of their bud, of their, um, property tax. Um, ran the numbers this morning, it, it feels like, uh, it would, it's not insignificant, it, it would be for my house around $20 a year more, so, um, but I think it is important for our residents that we, um, have fiscal, um, sustainability, and this is one of the ways that we can do that. Um, because there will probably be a little bit more money coming in, I would like us to, uh, specifically set that money aside for the old library or capital improvements. Um, and so, that's, that's how I feel, um, but I would love to hear what council feels. Um, so, Councilmember Hanson, what are your thoughts?
I'm fine with truth and taxation. I think it is transparent, we haven't done, done it in a while, but I hope it's something we do regularly, to open up. And I look, if we do the truth and taxation, too, um, maybe this is a question, because I'm unfamiliar with the process, do we have public, public hearing on that?
Yes, we do.
And they can make comments and let us know?
Absolutely.
As long as they're involved in the process, I'm fine, and I appreciate your, you know, I am in favor of, of extra monies going to that old library, and that would be great. But again, I like that the public's involved, they get to see what's going on, I appreciate you being very forthcoming on what this means, what to keep the rate. It will give us an increase with, uh, increased property taxes, and I look forward to hearing from the public about all of this. That's what I think.
All right, thank you. Um, Councilmember Page, thoughts?
All right, you remembered my name, that's great.
I know. Surprising.
Hey, just, uh, no, I'm okay with it, too, and, and, uh, I like the, the transparency of it. I, I think it's always good to, to talk about these issues. Um, I, I hope the people of Kaysville understand, I know, as we stand right now, we're the third lowest in Davis County on our property tax. I, you know, I, I, what we don't want to do is, is get to the point where everything becomes a crisis, and then you have to sit there and, and have these great big giant increases, and I just don't think that's appropriate. I think that we always need to have those discussions and, and talk about those issues as well. You know, the, I guess my big concern is, is, uh, we have inflation, everything keeps going up, but, uh, you know, if you don't have the revenue to do things, that's a, that's another issue, uh, as well. So I, I, I think it's a, it's a good process, and I think that, uh, it's long overdue.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Adams, thoughts?
No comment.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Barber?
I like the idea of always do a truth and taxation, because it, um, makes her, makes sure the transparency comes out?
Agreed.
From there. I think it sounds like a good idea, and the public hearings probably should be done every year, regardless.
Agreed.
I have had a hard time on the property tax decision, of whether or not we keep it or lower it. I would never, obviously, we're not going to raise it, that would be a whole different discussion. Um, I looked at a lot of neighboring cities, and it seems most of them are doing truth and taxation's because they're raising their rates, raising their property taxes, which I don't think we need to do this year. The question of, is the cost of operating our city increasing the way that our property values are increasing? That's my, that, the question, because if it is, then it makes sense to keep your rate the same, if it's not, if it's inverse, then you could change it. And I, I see the, the cost of operating our city not going down ever, in fact, they keep going up, so. I, is, the question is, is it an appropriate rate to match it, that's my question. You can estimate how much property values have gone up versus cost of maintaining the city, are they going up at the same rate, that's the question. I think so, I don't know, maybe Dean could speak to that a little bit more. The, the cost, the property value increase versus the cost of maintaining our city, are they about matched? Because, in that case, it would make sense to me to keep it at that level.
The most recent numbers we received from the Tax Commission just yesterday or the day before, had our proposed tax value, and the inflationary portion of that, the inflationary growth was about eight percent.
Okay, all right, thank you, Dean, all right, Councilmember Garn?
There's an anonymous saying that I like, which is, to know what is right and not do it is a want of courage. And I see that a lot, you know, and I'm not, I don't want to point to any individuals or any past councils, but to go for twenty years and then do a hundred percent property tax increase, you know, I have to question that. So, I want to back up a second, before we even talk about the rate or what's appropriate, and just say that this is great, I mean, I applaud it. If this council does that, and that becomes a new tradition in Kaysville, that every year we consider where we are, instead of thinking, and here's the thing, and I'll just say, you know, yes, listen to everyone as a representative, but still do the right thing. Don't be afraid to make the right decision, do I always make the right decision? Of course not, I make mistakes, but have the courage to make the right decision, and the right decision is to consider this every year. I don't frankly know yet where I would come down on whether the, and let me just explain briefly how property tax works. Because of truth in taxation, the, the revenue amount stays, it's a little complicated, because as you add new homes, the revenue amount can go up, right? But on any given set of properties, the revenue amount has to stay exactly the same in dollar terms, with no adjustment for inflation or anything else. So, when property valuations go up, the rate automatically goes down, so the revenue will stay the same. So, year after year, that's why you need a hundred percent tax increase after a hundred years, because of eight percent, or whatever the percent in general inflation is, you know, has been low for a number of years, but, but construction inflation has been much higher than that. And, you know, we do a lot of projects, and so, over time, the value of that same dollar amount on property tax declines year after year. So, you would think that maybe, you know, as rates go up, your revenue is gonna have to go up, just like wages have gone up. And I won't go into that, but look at what a loaf of bread cost when I was born in nineteen fifty-eight, I love those little sheets, you know, what did everything cost in nineteen fifty-eight? What was a gallon of gas, you know, and so, everything goes up, so if you, if you think, you know, it's okay, we're gonna keep the dollar amount of what you get paid Jake at nineteen fifty-eight levels, but now a loaf of bread costs twenty times as much, or whatever the figure is, hmm, I don't think that's gonna work too good. So, to consider it every year, to be fair and transparent, to have a hearing, there is a balance between essential services and what they cost, we want the cost to be as low as possible, but we have to consider it every year, not kick it down the can, kick, kick the can down the road to the next council. So, I'm very glad to see that that's what we're doing, and I'm, I'm grateful to the mayor for bringing this up, and for being courageous, and for, for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and I will make a commitment that I intend to have us do truth in taxation every year while I'm mayor, and I hope that we can start this as a new tradition for, for our city, because I think it's important. So, I, do you have your direction?
I, I think that we do, Mayor, we'll, we'll put together the, the new tentative budget for adoption next council meeting, and if we do decide to, to adopt it, at that point, we would not adopt the final budget until August.
Okay, all right, great, now, Councilmember Barber, you had an issue that you wanted to talk about, about fire, do you want to talk about that at this point, now that we've covered these three things?
Yes, I do, but I also had a truth in taxation question.
Oh, absolutely, go ahead.
So, where you said your proposal for where the additional money from the truth in taxation would go to, that I'm not...
Okay.
Completely comfortable with, and I'm wondering, do we have to allocate that when we do the truth in taxation, about where the money will go?
Dean's probably the best one to answer that question.
No, you can allocate it to a specific purpose, or you can allocate it to, to fund balance, you can allocate it to a capital projects fund, so you could allocate it any number of ways.
But are we required in communications that go out, that say, okay, we're doing our truth in taxation, public hearing, rates will be this, and we have to say this is where the additional money will go, we don't have to say that?
There'll be notices in, in the paper, there'll be notices on the public notice website, and then the county will prepare their estimated assessed values for taxes in November, and it will include a line item saying, this is the amount of revenue Kaysville City will receive with truth in taxation and without truth in taxation.
And that's how we'll know.
And that's how you'll know, the people will see that notice.
That, that adjustment, so you don't, do you, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Do you plan to put anything out about that you're going to allocate that additional money to that fund?
I am willing to go with the, whatever the council decides, does that feel?
As long as you're, I would rather it...
We not, but polarize?
We not, we not, yeah, exactly, leave it open, it comes in just like any other.
I'm fine with that, I just see that we have a, a need.
Totally noted.
But it's probably, it's probably better to not.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Garn?
Just one comment on that, it's not that we don't do it, I mean, you could do it ad hoc, that's what I would call it, just say, I would really like this additional revenue to go to this particular purpose, but the fact of the matter is, that's what the budget is, I mean, that's what we're doing right now, right? So, there...
Good point. It should be precluded with the discussions that we're having about where does budget go, what are our top priorities of the city, where should this money go, so, I think we're on the same page now.
Okay, good point, and Shane, you had a comment?
I, I just want to maybe clarify, and Dean, would you correct me if I'm, if I'm mistaken, but I think as we put these materials out, I think there's still an opportunity for that rate to still change, once the final adopted budget is. So, the tentative would set the, the, the operating parameters for the city from July first until that final adopted budget in August. So, at that, at that time, I think you could still change the certified tax rate, so I don't know if there's a discussion here between leaving it flat where it is, or lowering it, but you could still have that discussion later on. Does that make sense, or help in any way?
All right, good, all right, any other members, thank you for also being courageous. The reason why a lot of city councils don't do this is that they're, they don't want to upset people, but when you look at it for what it truly is, which is transparency, I think that it's the right way to go, and I appreciate you being willing to stand up and be counted on that. Okay, Councilmember Barber, you made a good argument that in the packet, we did not clearly say what we were gonna be discussing. So, if anybody has things that they would like to talk about with the budget, that they want to, obviously, we don't have a bunch of staff here to answer questions, but if you have feelings that you want to express to your other councilmates before we adopt the tentative budget next council meeting, then this would be an appropriate time to do that. So, Councilmember Barber?
I actually have two items, and I'll look through my notes, I may have another one.
Okay.
First is the fire, overall, not just the, the fire truck that we talked about, but just the fire department as a whole, and I know Chief Erickson came last, last council meeting, he did a good job of explaining, I just had more follow-up discussion I wanted to have in this forum. And then the second is our capital improvement projects, particularly the old library funds that are set aside there and the plans for it. I just think it'd be good to have in this discussion, this forum, so residents can hear. So, for the power, the adjustments to the full-time, or sorry, I said power, but I meant fire, lots of funds here, so, fire, I apologize. Transitioning to the full-time staff, I think, I had a couple of questions that came up about how they didn't think the numbers really matched up, because we're going from part-time to full-time for really not a lot more investment, and mostly that's, as I've seen it, because it's a more efficient use of our employees. So, I think it's a great investment, and it provides more sustainability for our residents. If any staff has anything else to add to that, I think it's a great thing. And then the fire truck, we have a capital lease that is expiring this year, it's being paid off, and so, we're, we have a new proposed investment in a, a different type of bigger fire truck that would take over that lease, or sorry, be a new one in place of it for the next five years. I think it's to the tune of a hundred and seventy grand a year for the next five years. It's really hard for me to know what's right there, I don't deal with fire trucks, I don't know a lot, so I've asked Chief Erickson to justify it, which I think is our due diligence as representatives, and that's the best we can do. I'd love to hear from other councilmembers what they think, too, but one thing I've learned is that if we approve it, we decide to go for it, it's still a year out before we actually get it here in the, in the city. So, we're, anytime we delay is putting us out another year from getting this fire truck that they say we need, that they say is justified based on the use of our other ones, and putting them into reserve status. So, I would love to hear other comments from other councilmembers, because I feel like it's been justified, but it's still a lot to swallow.
Sure, Councilmember Hanson?
Just a follow-up, are we gonna have all the different people here next week to, and, from all the different?
We, we can definitely do that, yeah.
Just, just for those final questions, I mean, because I think we, and again, in my mind, I think we talked about this, too, but new fire trucks, but there is a salvage value to the old ones, because we're replacing the old ones, the older ones, is that right? So, there'll be some offset, and sorry, this just maybe goes back to our...
Yeah, I don't think there was.
Councilmember, I believe, weren't we keeping that?
I, I thought the one that we were paying off, we're keeping, but I think, I thought there was another one that was, been paid off for some time, that would be able to be...
That we could use for salvage, or?
Sell to another city that needs a...
But I thought that the value was super low, that they estimated, like, low enough that it wouldn't really offset it very much.
Well, yeah, it's probably a small percentage, I would correct, yes.
All right, okay, other thoughts on fire truck, anybody? Councilmember Adams?
So, the rescue truck existing, you, someone used the word justification, so let's focus on that word. Does the justification meet, and are we doing, in, in other words, in another comment that was made, what, however, I don't remember the finesse of it, but what is right takes courage? Well, is it right to spend eight hundred thousand dollars to replace a truck that's sixteen years old, has about twenty thousand miles, and is still what we would call a clean one owner? We've done that before, and our former truck went for, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars to a, a first-world city in California, who wrote it up on the front page of their newspaper. It was that celebrated, and what a great deal they found on such a clean truck, that was still brand new. I've been on fire trucks that Ogden City used for twenty-four years solid, and they were worn out, put away wet, and they retired. And to my knowledge, this isn't worn out, put away wet, and to, to say that justification of, well, it won't pass smog is enough, that's not enough for me. To say that, well, over the last seven years, it's cost us seven thousand repairs, well, tires alone are about four thousand dollars, so, that's not enough for me. I think there's five plus more years of life in that truck, and I don't think it meets, you know, I don't think it's, I don't think it meets almost a million-dollar expenditure to just say, well, we want it. I get the case of the I-want-its, you know, we all have a little kid in us, I get that, but I don't think it rises quite to that level, and I've seen trucks that are thirty years old pass smog. So, you know, was the truck ran down I-15 for forty-five minutes to warm it up, or, I don't know, but you can get diesels to pass their smog tests, it's not that. I just had a diesel pass a smog test that has not been started for seven years, and it passed without doing anything to it. So, it, it, it's, it's not there for me, not to spend eight hundred thousand dollars, I, no, I don't see it, I don't, I don't think we're quite there yet.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Garn, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I think in general, I mean, I think a lot of the ideas going forward have been around for a long, long time, and some of that's done as far as inter-agency coordination, where if a Leighton fire truck, or a Farmington fire truck is closer to an emergency, or a large emergency, then maybe several agencies converge, because they need a lot of help. And I, I think that we have those inter-agency agreements, which is great, could we do even better, you know, and I, probably, and we should keep working on that, but I think the issue is, and you get this issue with almost anything, you know, any resource, what is the exact right amount of the resource? When, when does a truck become a liability where you could lose a life because it's constantly in the shop? Or what is the, the right cycle for replacement, and how many vehicles do you need? And, you know, you can go at any given time in the day and see firemen in the fire station, and you can see fire trucks sitting there, and you think, wow, that's a lot of fire trucks, how come they're not all out doing work? Well, that's not the way emergencies work. The fact of the matter is, if you had a severe, more, a more, a broader emergency, the agency would be totally overwhelmed, and frankly, there'd be mass loss of life. But we can't afford to have, we can't afford to have the hundred-year event covered with enough equipment to do that. So, it's a professional judgment, and I applaud councilmembers for having the discussion with each agency head, and, and the chief to, in this case, for the fire department, to try and decide, do I feel that that's a warranted expense? I think at the end of the day, though, I'm gonna defer a little bit to the professional judgment, and I think, I think of my own professionalism, I hope everyone would be there, but I can frankly say, like, when I travel, I always take the cheapest possible route, because I don't care. I don't need, I'm short, I'm only five foot ten, I don't need first class, you know, I don't care, I don't even focus on it at all. Now, are there some people who would think of a fire truck as a toy? Maybe, but I think chief, the chief is pretty busy with a lot of concerns to run his department efficiently, I think he's doing a great job, and frankly, I'm gonna defer to his judgment on this one.
Thank you. Councilmember Page, did I recall on you? I can't remember.
No, I, I don't think you did.
Please.
No, I actually, my reasoning is the same as when I've talked to him. I, I don't think we're the professionals, and I don't think we should second-guess, I'll, I'll give you a good example. You know, we had the, the chief of police back here, in fact, I don't even know if he's there anymore, there he is, okay, there he is, he's the faithful guy that always shows up. You know, just like he's talking about patrol cars, and he's asked for, you know, for several patrol cars. Well, the thing that we don't understand is, is there's been several times this last year, that because of cars breaking down, we only had one car on patrol here in the city, because the other ones are in the shop, or they've been towed off. Well, that's not right, and, and only that, that's an issue for public safety. I, I think that, I think we, I'm willing to defer to the expertise of our individuals, and then on top of that, I think that the, the important thing is, is we're policymakers, we're not, we're not the people that determine what they, you know, you can have this tool, but you can't have that tool. I don't think that that's a, that's a healthy way of doing it, but I, I think that we, and, so I, I agree with Jake on this, I, I think that one thing that we need to understand, when times are good, you'll, you'll look at things for improvement, when times are bad, then you have to make tough decisions. And, you know, people, my opinion is, they're not gonna get any better than they are right now, and I mean, and that's the, we need to be careful when we come to these kind of things, so, I actually, that's how I look at it.
Okay, Councilmember Hanson?
I don't have any questions or comments, I need to just talk to the chief, and I will, between now and the next meeting.
Yeah, I think if you talk to the chief, yeah, Councilmember Barber, okay, okay, and then you brought up capital improvements, do you want to expand on that?
Just specifically on the, what's been allocated and what will be allocated for the old library.
Nothing, nothing has been allocated from this budget currently for the old library.
Isn't there a four hundred thousand dollar?
On page nine, it says five forty-five for the library, City Hall library improvements.
Last year, we did that, I don't think we've done that this year.
Is that just rolling over from last year?
The funds are still there, but we haven't reallocated them to be spent.
That was exactly my question, right, so we still have those, and then the library building renovation on page one seventeen, is that different, five hundred K?
One seventeen, I'm not sure I follow where you are.
Sorry, I don't, I don't have the...
Okay, hold on, would it be under capital improvements?
Are you in the capital projects fund?
Yeah, it's gotta be there, I don't have the actual tab, sorry. Oh, yeah, we need Dean's inserts over here. It's the library building renovation, do we have that line added?
That's in, that's in current budget, FY eighteen, obviously, we haven't spent that, so that will expire at the end of June thirtieth.
So, that one, does it go?
The appropriation will be over, you'll have to reappropriate that money at a later date, and that's why, as Shane mentioned, that there's nothing currently allocated for the library, so as we move further along in that process, you'll have to create a budget for that. So as we move further along in that process, you'll have to create a budget for that.
So, so we don't have that five forty-five from the first number?
It still exists, we just haven't put it back in the budget.
It exists in the general fund?
That's right.
Okay.
Well, it, it's part of fund balance in the capital projects fund.
So, okay. Sorry, sorry, capital improvements fund, I shouldn't have called it the general fund, sorry.
Okay, all right.
Can I talk about this?
Yes.
Are you done?
No, go ahead, Councilmember Page.
Well, it's kind of changing the subject a little bit.
Uh, I think that's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I, it's interesting, and I, I guess I'd probably like to talk to Dean about this a little bit. We had, you know, some members from our city talk about what they would like to see, you know, about, for example, on, instead of just transferring the money, to actually have a billing system where we can actually see the numbers and then, you know, then from those funds go over. You know, actually, I actually like that idea. I, and I, and I guess it comes from being a businessman. I, I know in the past, sitting down with my CPAs, which is always, you know, I extend as much as I can because I hate the process. But just like he said several times, I used to, you know, I'd have one business, and I would use assets from another business to, to perform, you know, things in my, in various businesses. And I, one of the issues I used to have, he says, you cannot intermingle funds, you need to separate it. If you're gonna, if you're gonna use this equipment here, you need to be paying a lease payment or whatever you need to do, and have it separated for not only liability but for other purposes. I know there's, there's no liability on this, but is that a, is that a hard thing to do to just, to make that part of the thing? And I mean, I don't think that every month is important, but, you know, once a quarter or something like that, we make, instead of doing a mass, you know, transfer, that we could actually, for transparency purposes to, I mean, is that a hard thing or...
No, I'll try to explain what we do. In fact, it's the, at the back of your budget, there's supplemental information on administrative services and transfers.
Right.
So we, we take a portion of the city, city manager's budget, legal department budget, administrative services budget. And we take a percentage of that and charge that back to the enterprise funds. Certainly, some enterprise funds require more work than others, and we, so we create a factor system. The electric utility is a factor of six, so they pay a higher percentage of those costs. And, and we arrive at that number, and then monthly, we, we distribute those costs on a monthly basis.
Okay.
We could certainly true it up at the end of the year and to see how close we really are, and that wouldn't be a huge deal. I, I think on a material basis, on, that's an accounting term, on what's really material to, to report, I don't think you would gain that much. I think you'd find yourself pretty close to, to what your allocation formula is. And, and maybe Jake or James could pitch in here too as, as accountants. But anyway, that's the process we use, and, and those allocations are reviewed by, by staff, our independent auditors look at those allocations to, to make sure they're, they're fair and reasonable. That's a requirement from the state auditor's office, that they look at those allocations. That, that would be administrative services. We do a similar thing on IT services. We, we take a total list of all the computers and servers, and the power department has so many computers, say fifteen, twenty, and then we allocate the cost of IT budget based on their proportionate share. So, so I think on an allocation basis, it, it works pretty well.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right. Okay. Councilmembers, Councilmember Adams?
On this topic, so we're proposing to take in gross around one point three million because you've got two, you've got two spreadsheets in this section of the packet, right? So on the one, your non-reciprocal transfers total out two hundred eighty-three thousand, right? And then on the next page, your reciprocal transfers are one point one million?
Yeah, that's correct.
So around one point four million, almost?
So, so for example, the electric utility pays about a hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars for administrative services. So that includes work by legal services, city manager, administrative services, including billing for services, sending out those utility bills. Hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars is, in my opinion, probably a very reasonable amount to provide all those services that the general fund provides to the enterprise funds. But yeah, your number is, is correct there.
Is that, so is that status quo for the last five years is one point four million? Is that about how much we've taken over the last four years, five years?
I think it's pretty close. We, we obviously change the allocation depending on, on the approved budget. If the approved budget for administrative services goes up, then obviously their allocation percentage will go up as well.
So we took around one point four million in gross last year also?
I think that's probably, probably accurate.
Park and Rec pay into any of that? I don't see them on there.
They're, they're a general fund, so it's not included as part of these inter-fund services.
Yes, Councilmember Hanson?
What's the difference between the non, the non-reciprocals and the reciprocals? Just the first page, what are the non-reciprocals?
Non-reciprocal are, are value of services provided without a cash exchange, whereas reciprocal transfers are...
Actually have a cash.
Actual cash entry.
Okay, so the non-reciprocals, just to verify, do not have a cash exchange?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Good.
Thank you. All right.
So...
Councilmember Adams?
So I have the last year's here, and there's no power fund there. So this year, we're taking two hundred grand from power, and I'm on the inter-fund service and transfer page, and the total's about two hundred eighty-three thousand. So it's not really status quo. So we didn't take it from the power last year, but we're taking it this year.
On the, the non-reciprocal transfers, yes, that's correct.
That is a change. That is a change. Councilmember Barber, did you want to speak to...
I wasn't done talking, would you?
Oh, I thought Councilmember Barber had a answer to that.
Well, elaboration usually is, is natural on a point.
Okay, sure.
So why is that a change? Why this year? Why not last year, the year before, the year before?
That's how we propose the budget for this year.
We brought that up and talked about it in our budget retreat.
No, I think Councilmember Garn talked about the two hundred thousand dollars that we pay the power department for the power that the city consumes, but now we're taking two hundred thousand dollars from the power department. So yeah, I think we're mincing. We did talk about, Councilmember Garn, and did talk about that. So this is different.
Actually, it's the same. So, so in years past, we actually did pay cash money to the power company.
And now the power company is paying two hundred grand.
And now, no, they are not giving us any cash, all right?
I know, it's kind of a...
But we are getting that value. That is correct. That is correct. And so, so, which is in line with every, all the other...
Other entities, how we...
Exactly, thank you. And Councilmember Garn?
I'll just say it the way I understand it, and then Dean can correct me if I'm incorrect. But in the past, and after Prop five passed, I believe, there was a transfer made, a cash transfer from the general fund to the electric fund, which represents the value of the power for the city buildings and also parks and, and streetlights, that sort of thing. And this simply, so rather than a transfer from the electric fund, which it clearly is not, it's the lack of a transfer from the general fund to the electric fund. Is that correct?
Okay.
For those purposes. And I might also add, by the way, that, that this is more efficient this way because the, the actual, you have to represent the value of it, but actually, I'm trying to think of how, how this works, but actually, there's very minimal cost. Maybe the best way to explain it is, you have an airplane, and they'll do this with non-revs a lot. After everybody's on the plane, the cost of one additional passenger for the load on that airplane is negligible. So that's when you've got space available, you put your non-revs on, it doesn't add any cost. That's like the city's power, actually. So there's, there's not, in my mind, a justifiable reason to pass a public benefit for public buildings, parks, whatever, over to the electric fund when there isn't really a cost to the electric fund of providing that, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Adams?
So, Dean, I've got the twenty eighteen book here. Is this reciprocal transfer, the one point one million dollar one? So that's provided in the eighteen book too, right? So every year we get this?
No, what you're looking at now is a new requirement. I mean, the numbers are there as far as charges, but the, the works that you're looking at is not part of eighteen because that's a new requirement, a new state law, that we, as we did earlier tonight, hold a separate budget hearing and, and provide a publication on all inter-fund activity.
Okay, but in the twenty eighteen budget, I can go and find within two percent these figures?
You, you could look, for, for example, you could look under the power department budget and say, what did power pay for information services? It'll be there. Or administrative charges, it will be there.
So the law changed, that's why you've got it here on the ledger for us?
As far as the noticing requirement, the law did change, yes.
Okay. All right. So I guess we should go through, we did talk about this at our budget retreat, just to be clear, or is everybody still okay with doing this?
Mayor, I have a point on that.
Yes, Councilmember Barber?
The way I understood it was just, I think, as Jake or Dean described, we're basically just not paying them for the services. So it's not, we're taking money away from them, we're choosing not to pay for these services, that's not, not required. And I do remember that discussion, I would love to go back, that we decided that was two hundred extra thousand dollars we could allocate to the roads.
This is correct.
And that's where that one point two million bumped up to, and that's where we all were appreciative for that.
I saw we did take that, pay it away.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. I, I, I remember deciding, not taking it away, just not paying.
We just don't pay it.
Uh-huh, and then that leaves two hundred extra dollars in the general fund, which I thought it was you, but at least I and one other council member were very adamant that that was two hundred dollars that went to the roads. Numbers are...
It was two hundred thousand, two hundred dollars.
Wow. This is why my budget's off track, dang it, sorry. Two hundred thousand dollars that we wanted specified to the roads, and we, we've seen reflected.
That's exactly right.
That is true. That is true. All right, and we're still good with that. All right, Councilmember Garn, you had a comment?
Yeah, so we're, we're fortunate to, we were fortunate to be able to have a little bit of extra surplus and to be able to allocate that to extra road maintenance. The only problem with that, unless the surplus builds back up and you maintain a safe level of surplus, you only have that one time. We, and when the economy turns again, it clearly won't be there, right? We'll be making, like, different decisions. But right now, we're trying to make decisions for the future, and one nice thing about this two hundred thousand dollars, although it's not as big as the one point two million one-time fund, this is ongoing every year.
All right, thank you. All right. Any more comments on this side? Okay.
On budget in general?
Um, yeah, I, I was doing...
I got a question, why are, why are our budget going up?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Why is our budget going up? And can our budget be given to police and fire?
Yes.
Can we sacrifice off and actually make our budget go down? I don't know why.
Sure. I, so I had some requests from council members to be able to travel, to go to trainings, and so I don't...
We do that already, so where are you going?
National League of Cities.
Is that a...
That's in Washington DC once a year. There's also other ones that you could go to around the country, I don't think that's necessary. But in order to pay for our council members, to have the money available for council members to travel to, to DC, to lobby our federal delegation and attend classes, I asked for that money. Now, we don't have to do that. If this council says, you know what, let's not do that, I'm fine with it. I put it in the budget in case our council members wanted to do that.
How does that work? Is there enough for everyone to go?
Yes.
Then what do you, so every, there's...
Every one person.
I think that's a lot of money when we have access to our congressman.
Well...
Do that, should be doing that work for us. It, it's kind of a nice trip per se, maybe a Facebook moment, but...
I like that.
We have representation.
Mm-hmm, okay. I, I feel that National League of Cities is important to not only talk to our federal delegation because it is the time when those, those federal folks set aside for us in DC, so it is kind of a, a good opportunity. But also the classes that are involved and the associations and, and learning from other people, other communities across the country, which you can't do just at league events. So I had great conversations with some folks from Selma, Alabama, talking about what they're doing for roads and really recognizing how grateful I am to live here. They have some real, they can't get the trash picked up. So we are in great circumstances, but it's conversations like that, that you, you end up, if you have several council members attending these things, then you can send them to all the different classes and then compare notes and say, okay, well, here's some ideas, what can we bring back to our community? So...
I can sense you have a real passion, and you've reminded me now, I remember in the budget session, when you're not elected official, you took the mic and said that you think that that should, how much you like doing that. So I recall it, maybe that's your project. I just think with the given asks, you know, we've been faced again tonight with, you know, another quarter million plus.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how much we need to keep, in, in times of surplus, you don't just spend it all.
All right, yeah.
It's the ant versus the grasshopper. So I think we've got to pump some brake somewhere. I, I don't get a sense that this council has pumped a brake anywhere when it comes to money. I don't mean that rudely. So, and then we've got a lot of raises coming up this year.
Sure, which are important.
I mean, COLA, I mean, I, I think COLA's important, and I think taking care of personnel should always come before equipment. I've said that before, and I'll say it again. It should always come before equipment, you know, before, oh, getting a new, and I'm not talking about fire truck, I'm talking about, oh, we need a new truck in this department, that department, you know, we just went through that six months ago. I think it's more important to make sure the employees and what they take home to their families comes first, and we can sacrifice off on some newer trucks. So, but we're looking at over three hundred thousand dollars in raises this year. I haven't seen any evaluations. Now, COLA, I'm not going to argue, but I would like to see what I received last year, which is all of this information that I don't know if I've received yet, which is where the raises are going. So I would, I would like that again this year. And perhaps, maybe if there's, I don't, I, I'm not going to, you know, if it's none of my business, it's none of my business, but on a department head level, if there's big raises being given and upper echelon management, I think that we ought to have the ability to take a look at that if it's well beyond COLA. We did some massive raises last year after people had only been here for six to twelve months on top of COLA. So, yeah, I've got some concerns.
Shane?
Can I address that, Mayor?
Please.
There, there aren't any raises given that aren't along the, the already approved step and grade prop.
I understand that.
So, so you, you can tell just from there what, what has been allocated, if you even, we, we can give you a new sheet, but if you look at the old sheet, you can see that everybody that's, that's not topped out would just move one step along the, the progression then.
So if you'll send the sheet of who you're moving along COLA?
We, we're moving everybody that's not topped out.
What's that?
Everybody, everybody, we're, we're allocating funds for everybody that's not topped out to move along one step. So that's, that's what the budget is, has included. So everybody that's not topped out at the step, at, at step twelve would move along one step.
Upper echelon management, are you, are you guys all getting raises?
Everybody that's not topped out there, we have three or four that are topped out as department heads.
So...
So they wouldn't, they wouldn't get the...
How many are topped out? Roughly?
Fifteen.
What do we have, nine, how many places?
Maybe twenty. I'd say close to twenty.
Twenty, twenty of our...
We have 100 employees altogether, so 20% are topped out, so 80% of people are getting raises.
Correct.
Well, it's budgeted for based on, based on the evaluation process.
Right.
It's included in the budget.
Right, and the fact that the general fund has surplus, let's be honest, couldn't do it without that, so.
But we're not using surplus money, though, to fund the raises. This is, this isn't, it's, it will be an ongoing expense, so we're not, we're not saying, let's take one-time monies and use those for raises, that's not what's happening.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm thinking on a different plane, but I accept that, that's okay. But now this is a new $300,000 a year going forward, on top of fire truck, this, that, salt shed, things that are popping up at us repeatedly. So, you know, these are fixed costs going forward, plus, might I add, that we're going up nine percent, and this is not news to you or anyone, this may be news to viewers at home, that we're going up nine percent again on health insurance, and we just went up roughly 40% last year. So, yeah, I think we're bursting the belt on money.
Okay, thank you. And I will say that if we want to, everything is on the table, what I proposed for our city council budget, I do know that I want to be realistic, right? So, but if you guys would like to go through that and reallocate that, that's fine with me. Councilmember Garnon.
I'll be the second council member to speak on that thing. You know, it's interesting, what's the value? I often, as a CPA, I have a requirement for 180 hours, can you remember what it is, James?
Education.
Every three years, I think, or 40, 40 hours a year, I guess, so it'd be about 120 hours. And some of the courses are excellent, are really necessary, they're right mainline to what I do, others I think, mm, you know, I'm not sure what value I got out of that. But clearly, the takeaway is the technical knowledge is important, but I'd say that's about 25% of what's important, those courses. 75% of it is the conversations I have that might generate new ideas to do something better, to innovate, to improve. And I think something like this, and maybe it's partly because I just remember, I have a history, when my father was mayor of Salt Lake, he was first president of the Utah League of Cities and Towns, and then he was president of the National League of Cities and Towns. And I think it made him a better commissioner, a better mayor, you know, and in the short time he was there, he got a lot of things done in Salt Lake that maybe if he hadn't had the conversations to understand how other cities, what's the benchmark? How do we know? If we don't have those conversations, now, I get that, I don't think that's, in an emergency, you know, it's not the top priority, but the problem is if you don't take care of educating not only your council members, who are representatives, but also the city, to stay top-notch with what the benchmark is, in the long run, that costs taxpayers more, because the essential needs do not go away, you're simply not delivering them as efficiently and at a benchmark as you possibly can. The hard part is, you may not be able to point to, you almost have to be committed to having those kinds of conversations, a council and a senior management staff that's willing, and I think our senior management staff is willing to stay up with the conversations of what's changing and bring, it doesn't mean you adopt everything that some other city's doing, it means that the conversation itself causes you to be creative and to think of new ways to do things better. And if we're not innovating, if we're not improving, then we're staying the same and it's getting more costly. So, long story, I'm getting long-winded here, I believe in the power of networking and having those conversations, and I think it would be a relatively very small expenditure that could pay big dividends over time if we're committed to looking outside ourselves and looking at ways of doing things better.
Okay, thank you. All right. Councilmember Hanson?
Can I just ask a procedural question?
Absolutely.
For, in two weeks from now, when we meet again, to pass a tentative budget, because we're doing truth and taxation, and that's why I call it correctly, tentative, is that? But as we pass a tentative budget, is it, is it an all or nothing? Or is it, can we strike line items?
I am not sure.
I think you can do whatever you agree to do.
That's what I'm just saying, if I make a motion, let's strike this line item, and if we get the votes or not, but we can, I just want to know the mechanisms for two weeks from now.
Yeah.
So, okay.
It probably procedurally would be easier to do between the meeting, just to have it ready, so I think the closest we can get to a budget that you're ready to adopt, the better off we'll be, just to keep from being too complex, I want to strike, you know, page five, number two, and if you do that a lot, it may get a little confusing.
How do we do that between meetings, though? Well, that takes a vote.
Yeah, that's true. You're right.
So, yeah, but what you can do is, what you can, you need to be talking to your other council members. If there's something that you're not comfortable with in the budget, then get your case together, you need to contact all the other council members and say, hey, I think we need to change this, and this is how I think, and get their feedback. If nobody's going to support it, then it doesn't make its way into the tentative budget.
That's an awful idea.
But if, but if you get at least three other people, or two other people, to support your position, then we, we need to have probably that discussion in public and then vote on that, to strike that from the tentative budget. So that's kind of how I see it. So please go through, if there's, if there are things that you feel should not be there, start talking to your other council members. All right? Okay. Are we ready to move on to our next item?
I'm ready.
Okay, okay. All right. Let's go on. Now, just briefly, so we had spoken also at the budget retreat, talking about our economic development. So probably tonight, we don't have many things spelled out here, are there, we have a list here in the packet, things that you might be interested in hearing more about? Are there items here that you would like to hear more about? So, let's see. How about, now, important to remember, Shane, do you want to sum up what you found out, just for the public?
As previous council discussions have brought this up, I think the role of the council versus the role of staff was one thing that you expressed an interest in defining. And so I guess our question from a staff level is, do you want to define that in a plan? Do you want to define that in maybe just a resolution? I think either one of those would work, but we wanted to just get some further direction from you on what you think this might look like. We did reach out to a number of other Davis County cities and asked them, do you have an economic plan we could look at? And all of them told me no, that they don't have one, and a few of them actually said the same thing, which is, economic development is too hard to pin down, it's too hard to say, this is our policy, because it's, first of all, it changes daily, and the second of all is, the example they used is, if Costco or something you really want is coming to your city, you're going to throw your plan in the garbage, and you're going to do whatever you want to do to get them to come here, so, or whoever you might like. So, that being said, there are plans out there, we're happy to put together a plan and present that to you, if that's something you'd be interested in, I guess we would just use what we currently do as a model for that plan, but then you could refine that as you'd like.
Okay. Councilmember Hanson?
Just something I'd be interested in is, I want to be careful not to restrict the city, but again, you know, we've talked about incentive guidelines, just maybe some general ideas, you know, potential ROI thresholds that we can go after, just as general, again, when we're offering these incentives, to make sure the payback is, you know, a certain amount. I just, I think that'll be helpful, and if we, again, I agree with you, and maybe that's because I want a Costco in town.
[laughing]
You know, I would think differently, so I don't want it to be so restrictive, but at least some guidelines that, as a council, we feel comfortable with, you know, that, hey, this falls within our ROI. And what I mean by ROI is just say, if we cut somebody some taxes, what's the return going to be? What's the planned return? Does it meet certain thresholds that we're comfortable with? That stuff to me, again, I would love that in a plan.
Great.
Just so there's not that worry about it being unfair to one versus the other, because I think that can sometimes squeeze future economic development, how come you're not helping me, I'm moving to another city, you know, that's going to sweeten my pot, just to be fair throughout the process.
Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, to support what he's saying there, this is what we talked about, you know, six weeks ago, this issue came up. This, we, I mean, I totally understand what those other cities are saying, this is like trying to chase a water balloon, you know, but what Councilmember Hanson is getting at is critical. We have got to determine a policy, maybe not a development plan, but we need a policy surrounding this. We, no offense, but we can't have, you took the blame, so I'm going to aim at you, we can't have you going around giving $50,000 of road base to whoever you choose. That just doesn't work, because then when every business owner comes and screams at us and says, are you kidding me? I've been here for 40 years, 50 years, and nothing, and now I'm looking at closing the doors? And you give this rookie? Where's your policy on that? You can't operate that way. So I would say fully supportive of, yes, there's, I get the part of it that's the water balloon, that you just can't squeeze, you can't determine it. But do we need a policy? Absolutely we do. As to what business gets what, and what business, you know, I mean, that frankly was wrong, what happened there.
I'm going to disagree. All right. Councilmember Garnon?
Yeah, I disagree with Councilmember Adams' assessment on that, I think that was...
Mayor, no debates are allowed.
I think, I'm running this meeting, I think we're good, I think...
Point of order.
We are having a discussion.
Let me rephrase, then I do believe I have the floor. I would say I think it was a good decision to incentivize that firm to come to Kaysville. I understand, it is, it is an issue when you have existing businesses that might say, well, why does this new business coming to town get a temporary tax break? But I want to back up just a little bit and suggest something about Smiths, because there's a lot of demagoguery and obfuscation, misinformation, basically misleading the public, even by a school board member at that point, who, interestingly enough, supported a tax incentive in his district, but didn't support the one in Kaysville. If you look at what the Smiths is providing in terms of, I mean, I live right behind it, so if anyone has an argument about being in their backyard, it would be me, right? There's no one who's closer. But I use it all the time, I actually enjoy the, you know, you take lemons and make lemonade, I enjoy being able to walk to the store and have that facility there. Clearly, it's used, so a lot of people, a lot of human beings have an excellent service there, and it also provides revenue for the city. So clearly, for that small tax incentive, and by the way, even on property tax, even though there was a tax increment, they immediately started collecting property tax. The argument was that somehow that was robbing schools. That is a totally inaccurate, misleading statement, because immediately, schools got more revenue. And after a certain number of years, when the tax increment goes away, they'll get even more revenue. Now, if you hadn't, and here's the problem, you could make a philosophical argument that government should not use tax incentives. However, cities compete for businesses, and I guarantee you, if Kaysville puts down our sword, other cities will not. Leighton will use tax increments, and their school board representative will support it in his district. And so that, you know, Smiths will locate somewhere else. So as long as we play by those rules, and who knows who has enough power to, philosophically it's undesirable to use temporary tax increments to generate far more revenue in the future, and that's bad, then we can make that choice. But right now, Kaysville cannot compete, we're already not competing, arguably, as far as retail tax base with Leighton and Farmington, and so you're going to give away the only tool you have to incentivize new businesses. So yes, I, you know, I get the fact that you have great corporate citizens in Kaysville that have been here for years, why don't we get that? And the answer is, maybe it's not fair, but Kaysville's trying to attract new businesses to come to the community so that we have, you know, a desirable retail service base that also generates tax revenue for our citizens to take care of essential needs, that's the bottom line.
Okay. So what I've heard so far is, I think we want to continue to discuss the idea of incentives, and what parameters, is that what I heard from you, Councilmember Hanson? How we might use them, and just general guidelines, correct? So that would be something that our council would be interested in. And another, something I'm interested in discussing is whether or not we should consider having a portion of a full-time employee focused on economic development. That's something I think we need to discuss as a council, to see if that would be beneficial to us, that would be something. Anything else on this list that Councilmember Adams?
Aren't we paying Better City to do that right now? I hate to keep throwing more money.
Sure, sure. Yeah, so we have...
We have a professional firm who's...
Yeah, and so that is something that we would discuss, are, should we be putting more effort into that? So it's something to discuss. And obviously, we have not allocated any funds for a full-time employee for that, for the next coming year, so it would be, nothing that we would be doing right away. All right. So, Councilmember Barber?
Two points. The first one, back to all of the incentives, I think, and this is what I said before, I think communication is key. That, no, we shouldn't be surprised by any of these incentives that come through. I know it's a fine line of, but you always, communication would have gone a really long way, and going forward, I think we've all learned, it'd be great to make sure everybody knows incentives. I think communication's the key, because you can't, you can't pigeonhole and make a perfect plan because it's adjustable, but we can always communicate what's happening, so.
Okay.
And then the second piece, oh, on the Better Cities point, I would love to entertain a motion to sever that contract today, until I see, unless I see better value coming from it.
Okay. Sure we'll be getting a phone call from them tomorrow.
You what?
I said, I'm sure we'll be getting a phone call from them tomorrow.
I would think that would be fine.
You know, let's, so you would like to discuss that?
I would, because I haven't seen a lot of value. I saw one presentation in December, and I've inquired and haven't seen anything else. So I think it's really worth revamping, giving light to this area.
Okay. All right. Any further direction that we can give you at this point?
Are you okay if we put together a plan with those kinds of guidelines and just...
To start talking about it, that's all that we need to be doing.
Redmine it up, and we can do that.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, where are we? Lost track.
We are just a call to the public.
Yeah. Okay. We are at call to the public. I think we put the list back outside, but I know that, thank you. All right, okay, so, call to the public, we have Margaret Ruff signed up to speak.
She's not here, excuse me.
Oh, she is not here. Randy Van Bowsie, please.
Sorry, I try not to make too many comments, but I was intrigued by the budget conversation today. I just wanted to comment, I appreciate the question asking surrounding the budget, just because I think it's easy to become complacent and just trust what we've been given and not ask questions, but I do think that that has to be balanced out with trusting the people that we've invested time and money into hiring, and I do think that Kaysville has hired some very quality individuals. I, again, don't think that that means they just get to run the city without any questioning, but I do think that it has to be a balance in any of those conversations. In my thinking, I just keep thinking, you know, government is not a profit organization, but it is still run like a business, and in order to do that, it costs money. There still has to be revenue coming in, and we want to get everything at... There still has to be revenue coming in, and we want to get everything at the lowest cost, but I think it has to be balanced out with what the community desires. And while Kaysville, in years past, has been more of a rural community that maybe was okay with slower response times, or less than stellar customer service, I don't know that that is still the picture of what Kaysville is. And I only can represent what I see, but what I see is a community that by and large wants good service. They want good roads. They want fast emergency services. They want knowledgeable leaders. These are things that our community wants, and honestly, they're willing to pay for. And while we want to keep taxes low, I think that has to always be balanced out with what represents this community. And so, just in moving forward with this budget, and in the continued discussion next week, I would just ask you to consider, you know, if keeping something in the budget provides this kind of good service that our community wants, then keep it. And the citizens will let you know if they are really truly unhappy with it. But if taking it out lessens that service that citizens were expecting, then keep it in. I, I think the bulk of people here, and again, I only can speak for what I see, but I think the bulk of people in Kaysville would rather pay a little bit more to have those good services.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Councilmember Reports, Community Development.
Just, just a quick thing. I would highly encourage you, what we do is, the Lee's going to be doing, they're going to have a workshop on land use on the 25th of August. I would encourage you to attend that, if you can, it's about four hours, five hours. The good thing about it is, we're going to have it here in Kaysville, so that gives us an opportunity, and we'll work on the planning commission to go as well. I, I think that it helps you on your decision-making, to know what the laws are and how it works. I think that'd be a great thing to attend. Just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Public Works?
I do not have a report today.
Okay.
Mayor, thank you.
Parks and Rec, anything?
Summer's coming.
All right. And Youth Council also?
Youth Council, yeah, we had a bunch of interviews, and have a fresh new crop of youth coming in, so.
Exciting, all right.
Exactly, so it is good. I had one other comment on, we're updating, I'm working with the city to update our road fee page, to make that a little bit more clear, so anyone that asks questions, it's very transparent. But there's also information coming out in the bill and the newsletter, and we're trying to really communicate that well.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Hanson?
I just have an announcement to make. So, just want to let everybody know that I'll be resigning from the city council at the end of July. I've got an opportunity to work at the Security and Exchange Commission in Washington, DC, and will be leaving Utah for a year to do that. And so, just want to, for those that are listening, there's an opportunity to be part of the city council. Any registered voter, any registered voter, citizen that Kaysville has, has an opportunity, it'll be, you'll finish out till the next election, so about a year and a half, you'd serve on the council, and if you wanted to continue on that, then you'd have to run for a, a two-year term.
That's right.
That's kind of logistics.
And, and we want to say how great it's been having you on the council, and having your influence here. And, but, at the same time, so excited for you. What a great opportunity to, to be able to participate in this. I do want to talk a little bit about the process that we're going to go through. So, we will be holding an open session, special meeting on June 26th. It's a Tuesday. Anybody who would like to be considered to fill James, Councilmember Hanson's spot until 2019, when they would have to run again, please send a letter of interest to me, it's mayor.witt@kaysvillecity.com, or you can also drop it off at the front office here. And, yes.
Do we have a form, a standard form?
I'm not going to have a standard form.
Really?
I think that as long as people, anybody who has an interest in serving-
Just the letter.
We will, I will, so what we'll do is, we will, anybody who would like to do this, we will interview, interview all of them. Obviously, Councilmember Hanson will not interview them, he will not be here that night. But, so, it will be our council members here, who will be asking the questions. I don't vote unless there's a tie, so it's up to you. And, and here's a, a point of clarification. So, we are doing it on June 26th. I think it's important that we get our new council member chosen as soon as possible, so they can get caught up on everything that we're doing here in the city, although they will not be sworn in until after the city council meeting in July, which is, so we will probably do that on July 20th. So, to allow Councilmember Hanson to, to participate in that council meeting on the 19th. So, hopefully, that's clear. If, if not, we will be posting this on the website tomorrow, so that you'll have written out instructions on, on how to apply. All I can say is, there are so many great people in Kaysville, and would love to, to have them on council with us, and whoever has the time. Just remember, it's not just our two council meetings. Also, as you've heard, our, our council members, we're, we're probably looking for a liaison to the Power Commission and the, the Youth Court as well. So, that's probably two more nights out of the month, and various civic events, and so, which we would love you to participate on. And also, please save July 4th, because we'll probably tote you along on our float. As, so, so that's the, the process that we're going to-
Make the decision on June 26th?
Correct. You will vote on the 26th.
Okay.
But we will not swear them in on, until the 20th.
So, they'll-
They'll be-
Presentations on the 26th?
Right.
Or before that?
It'll be the, on the 26th. They will, and, you know, I think it is appropriate for anybody who is interested in serving, these are the individuals who are going to be voting, and if you would like to talk to them, that's completely appropriate for you to contact these council members and let them get to know you. So, please feel free to do that. Okay. I think we need to-
Eric, can I say one thing?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Just in this, I would, if you are interested, please take the opportunity to talk with one of the city council members, just to talk about the time commitment, because there's a lot that goes into it, just so you can go in with open eyes.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Good point.
Only one point on-
Councilmember Adams, yes?
Maybe it's like a silent vote?
Say it again?
Procedurally, that, you know, because state law requires them all to come and be interviewed live before-
That is correct.
I think a silent vote would be appropriate.
I will check with our city attorney, and whatever the law is, is what we'll do.
Longmont did a lot of stuff like that.
Yep, they did, but that was in a different state. We will follow the laws that we have established here.
Off the top of my head, I think you have to vote in an open meeting.
Yeah.
So, I don't, but Nick, can I look at that?
But I can have a silent vote?
I, I don't, I don't know.
Um, so-
If you can look into that.
I am open to voting by paper, that's fine with me, as long as it's by law, all right? Whatever the law is, is how we'll do it, okay? All right.
And if it does dictate one way or another, then we can-
We'll vote again. We'll just keep voting until you-
You can silent vote if it does dictate one way or another, right? There's not a legal to silent vote it.
I, I will defer to Nick. So, we will get that answer for you. But whatever the law says, we'll do it.
It could be a preference. If the law doesn't specify, we can do what we want.
Yeah, it should be a group decision amongst us, if it doesn't specify.
If, if it doesn't specify, do you guys feel comfortable doing a paper vote? Councilmember, hold on.
I know it.
Oh, gosh. Page, page. I know this one.
He's new, don't worry.
This is really concerning. I have the easiest name up here.
Mine's pretty easy.
It's Councilmember Sheet.
Yeah, I'm going to start going like this.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Do you have thoughts on voting by paper?
You know what, I haven't even thought about it. I, my big thing is, is, you know, let's just look at a process and, and make sure it's legal, and we'll just go forward.
All right. So, no real opinion? Do you have an opinion?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to say thanks to James for being willing to run and to serve, and I know you'd still be here if not, and also the quality of your questions and thought process in making decisions, I really appreciate. The other, as far as, you know, I don't really have a strong preference. I'm with you, Mayor, of course, follow the law, we would always do that. I'm just trying to remember back in the past, as an observer, observer, I can't say that word, why? Observing city politics for quite a while, when they've had vacancies in the past, which has happened fairly regularly over time. I don't know if that says anything about how hard the job is, that maybe anyone's crazy to run, but anyway, there have been vacancies, and I don't remember that who voted for who was, was made known. So, if that's what Councilmember Adams means by a silent vote, and at least in the past, unless the laws changed, I don't think it was publicly announced.
It was public last time.
Did they say who voted for who?
It was here and got, I don't know, yes, it was right.
Oh, really? Oh, okay, all right.
But I, I'm, I'm fine to have it be a, what is that? You know?
Silent?
Silent, I think what we're looking for-
No, it's not silent.
No. My brain has shut off at this point, so, but-
Oh, good, we can take advantage of it.
Yes.
All right.
But what I'm, I'm saying is, let's, let's look into it, and, and we'll continue to discuss this later.
Let me say this, I, just real quickly, I may not have been there last time, but in the past, I know it's been done silently, so unless the-
Okay, so-
Without knowing, so if, yeah.
Okay, now, now I get what you're saying. Now I get what you're saying. I remember when we had our training, there was only one circumstance that required a roll call vote.
Mm-hmm.
And it was not appointing someone. I will work on it. I think it was, I think it was for a procedural change, I think.
Okay.
I get a candy bar if that was right.
Yes, she does.
Thank you.
All right, you're owed a candy bar. All right. So, um, calendar, we decided to add this back in, because we have lots going on.
Totally.
Fourth of July, will people be around for Fourth of July? Yes, yes, maybe?
I'm a maybe.
Okay, that's fine. We'll just put your stand-in in, if you're not going to be here.
I have my costume already.
Okay, wonderful. And you'll be here?
I will be here.
You mean the actual Fourth of July, not the meeting?
The actual Fourth, we are not meeting on the 5th.
Okay, that's what I thought we were-
We are only having one meeting in-
Come on. That's actually probably good to note.
In July, it will be the 19th.
As well.
All right?
And I would not miss the Fourth of July.
That's right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adams, will you be in town?
Uh, working on that.
Okay. All right. Okay. And we are going to need to work on float and et cetera.
And the Patriotic Devotional?
Yes. Can you announce about that?
The Sunday before, at Davis High School, 7 o'clock, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Have we said the?
I don't know.